Rebecca, did Wilson get to go out in the snow today?
Yes, yes, he did. He had lots of fun.
That was so cute.
Yeah. Very, very wet.
Yeah, yeah. I was in town around, I don't know, 2:00 or 2:30 when it started and by the time I got back up here, it was inches accumulating, so definitely not going to go anywhere for a little while.
Wow. Can we have the meeting without a quorum?
Well, it's a work session, so we're not voting on anything. Ron, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, we can sure meet. You can meet by accident with a quorum, but the, but the, we can't do any business, right? Oh, now that solves that problem.
Yep, Dave just joined, so there's four now. Well, I certainly don't want Nikki or Jeremy to be short on time, so let's go ahead and get started. And hopefully our two remaining board members will join us as soon as possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nikki. I'm excited to learn more about the world of finance.
Is Joe getting an announcement?
Yeah.
Joe, thank you.
You're welcome. Muy buenas noches y tenemos hoy como siempre traducción o interpretación que está este se ve un mundo aquí abajo en el Zoom. Se puede ir allá y tenemos todo en español para ustedes hoy. Gracias.
Thank you. Oh, good. And Bob joined us as well. Hi, Bob. We're just getting started. All right, take it away, Nikki.
Okay, um, so Ron and I talked a little bit about some questions and some information that might be helpful for you guys. So I'm just going to touch on a few things and then it'll be open for whatever questions pop up and Jeremy and I will kind of tag team to answer those both from auditor perspective and what we do. So it's completely kind of free flowing. So if anything pops in your mind, feel free to jump in. Um, so the question was around how you know if things are all right, watching for fraud or whether the numbers are okay and how to do that, you know, and in the big picture and the reports that are presented to the board, they are very overarching. So you're not going to be able to pick up from those reports any huge discrepancy from, you know, daily transactions and that sort of thing. But that's where all the internal controls come in. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about what we do in-house to monitor those things. And then how we, what we do to protect against things that happened like in 2017 where there was an issue with estimates and things like that. So the first thing that do I need to hold up? Okay, um, so the first thing, we present monthly reports to the board. When we do that from our office, um, we, I wait until the bank reconciliations are done and that's how we check to be sure that everything's in the system or it's another check anyway. So we're checking that everything they're listed, that's listed on the bank statement is actually registered within our accounting system. So that's one check and balance. Along with that, as things get put in our system, like if a deposit is prepared for our system, one person prepares it while another person will actually bring it to the bank and record it in the system. So that's where you get multiple eyes on each transaction. And then when those transactions are put in, they ultimately come to me for signature and review. So I'll be taking a peek at them, double checking accounts to be sure they're going to the right place. Again, kind of watching for logic. Lots of times it's just if a number doesn't fit, you know, whatever business or whatever grant, that would be something I can review at that point. Um, so along with that, accounts payable, some things you want to watch for, or I'm sure Jeremy has probably horror stories that he's, he's heard from different places. But there are some safeguards in that process as well. So if we have one person that sets up vendors, the person that puts in the invoices for payment cannot set up the vendors. So that's a way where one person doesn't have the control to set up a new vendor that's going to pay themselves or make up bogus business or those sorts of things. So again, it's that process with multiple people touching those transactions. And then again, after those checks are printed, another person actually stuffs the check, so they'll have a visual on that the check is matching the invoice. So there's lots of steps that are done ahead of the game as things are going, as numbers are going into this, to make sure those things are correct. The same types of safeguards are done in the payroll processing world. So we have HR, the HR office that works with the business office, and they have two different functions, but they work together. So as we hire new employees, the HR office actually adds new employees into the system. And so a payroll person doesn't go in and add in all the information. It's done from two different places. And again, that's a safeguard to be sure that, you know, somebody isn't setting up their cousin on the payroll or whatever it is. But again, having multiple eyes and multiple hands in that system to have those checks and balances. And also in that process, we'd have the payroll specialist that's doing a lot of the input as far as deductions and all those sorts of things. And then we have a separate person that actually reconciles all those deductions. So again, you have oversight, multiple people looking at those figures and balancing those different accounts. And that's not only for, you know, watching for fraud, but that's for just having extra eyes on it for mistakes. You know, we can, we're all human. There can be something put into a wrong account and those sorts of things. So it's multiple people looking at it and asking questions about things. This year, well, over the few years that I've been there, we have worked harder at overseeing all the student body funds in the different schools. Those are harder to monitor because all the transactions are happening out at each site. They're not in our office. And there are people, people that are doing the bookkeeping, that isn't their first job. So they've got a whole lot going on and then they have to turn around and bookkeeper for a few minutes. So we know it's a lot easier to get distracted in those worlds. So again, somebody from our office is that all those bank recs come into our office for review. And also we request examples, we request samples of their work. So we monitor throughout the year that when they've written a check that they've gotten the approvals that they're supposed to and all those sorts of things. Kind of a pre audit before our auditors show up. So we have an idea and we can offer help if we start to see things that don't look complete. We can go back out and support employees and give them some more pointers and, and some more processes to help them. At this point, are there any questions kind of in those areas or other things that might have struck you? Nope.
How often, you know, I don't know how often school districts are victims of fraud or whatever it is. I can't remember the term when people pocket the money from the organization.
Yeah, embezzlement.
Yeah, embezzlement, right. I mean, it seems like, I've heard cases around and it would seem like it'd be, could be relatively frequent, but I don't know how often that happens. Do you have any idea of the scope of the risk that we're, that we have, that districts in general have?
Maybe I can speak to that, Nikki, if that's okay for me to jump in. School districts are actually much lower at risk than some other governmental entities, primarily because of the scrutiny on school districts. The biggest risk in school districts is generally at that student body level where it's, you know, a bookkeeper that's a, it's a secretary in school who's doing, you know, three, four, five, 12 different jobs and makes a mistake one time, realizes nobody catches it and you know, maybe turns up in a bad way and has some kind of extensive need in their house and their household or in their lives. And then it starts to happen a little bit over time, but it's fairly low risk. It does not happen as often in school districts as it does in small cities. Rural fire districts have problems a lot of times. They're the smaller the organization also, oftentimes the more likely it can be because there's a lot of trust put into the one person because you might only have one person that does that job and the oversight is very difficult. So I applaud you guys as board, as a board for taking the time to learn about these things and think about these things in regards, in relationship to your own district and how you can monitor or at least have some confidence that those things might not happen in your district and you're really the act of doing what you're doing is one of the first steps. The preventative part is the most important part. Catching it is you're always too late when you've caught it. There will always be substantial amounts of money gone by the time you catch it, like 99% of the time. So the preventative work of the internal controls that Nikki went through is one of your biggest tools as a district to, to help prevent and limit that risk. Does that answer your question, Ron?
Yeah, it does. And it also points to the importance of looking at that audit report because you guys do some level of assessment of our, of our controls. I remember a couple of times in the past, we've had a situation where one of the offices, because of there's a small level of staff, didn't quite have all the levels of control and we had to figure out a way to get them in there.
Yeah.
That is something that I look at when I do, I see the audit reports is what you guys are saying about the quality of our controls.
Sure, sure. And that, that's exactly right. It's a great, a great question. So those are the kinds, kinds of questions you should be asking.
Kind of along those lines, there has been an increase in general with requests for changing direct deposit accounts, just kind of phishing emails. So we're always on alert for those. We always call the employee if we're getting those. We really want them to bring those in, but in the world we're in right now, we have to accept some electronic, more electronic stuff than we're usually comfortable with. And the other thing that's been coming in a lot more are like verifications of employment, just kind of blanket ones, asking if an employee is, you know, still employed there. And a lot of times those are debt collectors. So if they don't have the appropriate signature and release from the employee, we don't do anything with them. But we have noticed that there's more and more of those coming in. They find a fax number somewhere and shoot them to whoever, just trying to find an employee that might, you know, might not really know or be, be as aware. So we really try to stay on top of those types of items that, that keep popping up more and more. And if we see anything weird, we have the great tech department that we just forward it to and say, you know, this is a red flag. Does this look real? I mean, we don't, we don't click on anything or open it if we're suspicious at all. So they're a huge help in that point. One other thing I wanted to cover, so in 2017, as you are aware, there were some, a few things that all happened at the same time that caused a big hit to the district reductions in force. So the, one of the issues that happened at that time was enrollment estimate that wasn't good. There had been an increase in enrollment. There was an assumption that the next year there'd be this other huge increase. So they kind of built that in. That never happened. But in talking to some staff that were involved in that, there was really a disconnect in maybe the person that's doing those ADM reports and doing those collections and those actual body counts from the building. And then the person in, you know, in my office, it's throwing the estimates out there for payments. Those two didn't work together real closely from what I can tell. So the way we have it now, we talk about enrollment a lot. Greg's involved with it, worked with Tony who actually does the ADM collections. And, and then I work with that information as well. And so bringing all those together and everybody's eyes on it helps for us, helps us catch any errors and it causes questions. So Tony is not afraid to come to me and say, well, where's this number from? Why are you thinking this, you know? And so that's part of the team we have there that, if you're wondering, please ask me because I don't want that kind of error in our, in our estimates and everything. So we really worked hard to kind of put things in place that can be helpful with that. Another thing with that, oh, go ahead.
Want to point out that when that happened, you weren't working with us yet, that disconnect. That was before you.
That was, that was pre, pre our time. But I can completely understand, you know, looking at the facts, looking at how it got there. I can completely understand how it happens. It's, it was human error. And when you have other people's, several people's hands in it, sometimes it gets hard to bring together. Where, you know, my prior district, I was doing that all. So I just had all that stuff in one place and I just knew those numbers. Working a little more spread out, you have to be sure to pull those people in and get everybody's everybody's thoughts involved in trying to evaluate those numbers. So you know, and another issue with that one was there was a program that we quit carrying. So the, but what happened was they left the revenue side in the budget and took the expense side out. So it was inflated by this revenue number that was between $700,000 and $800,000. I can't, can't remember the exact amount. But in checking when we're doing the budget process, you know, that's something with having more people's eyes in that process and reminding and talking about, you know, we quit the SITCA program, you know, is that reflected in this document, you know, and causing that second look to be sure and double checking and triple checking that there's, there's two sides to all those programs. So hopefully, you know, we've added training sessions and everything to the budget process and we involve quite a bit of staff with that at this point, too. They each look at their own departments. And we do staffing audits. We're just starting the process right now where we go to every building and be sure that we're all on the same page with the staff they think they have and the staff that are being charged to their accounts. So all those pieces hopefully in those discussions that were, we need out any of those errors that could pop up with those different programs and stuff. So that's another thing that we've started doing to try to catch some of those things. Let's see. Are there any questions on that part right now? Not really.
Question, and maybe Jeremy can help us or you can help us have a perspective on. That thing about SITCA has always bothered me because the data was in front of us in the budget process. If anybody had caught SITCA showing up on the revenue side and thought to check whether it was also showing up on the expense side, that could have been done by a budget committee member or board member because we had data in front of us. It's not all in one place. It would have been hard to see and nobody saw it. It went all the way through the budget process. Is it, is it, Jeremy, maybe if you've looked at different places. I mean, I feel bad that we didn't catch it. I mean, I feel bad I didn't catch it. I feel kind of personal about that. Because I didn't catch it and I think I could have possibly caught it had I been more thorough. So what do you think about that?
It's a, it's a hard question to answer, Ron, because, well, one, I'm not super familiar with what the situation is, but I, I mean, from Nikki's brief description of the scenario, I think yeah, ultimately it's the budget committee and the board's responsibility to make sure that the budget is correct and, and you know, goes out the way it needs to go out and represents the needs of the district. It's a large document. It's not a small document and as board members, you all have, I mean, you're not, this is not a paid position. You're not spending 40 hours a week or, or probably anywhere close to that in terms of, you know, the time you can allocate to your position and how you can review. And so it's always a, it's always a juggling act between, you know, what, what the review provided by the, you know, the management is, your involvement in reviewing that and how detailed you can be about that. I'm not sure where that would have shown up if that was in a special revenue fund, Nikki, or it sounds like maybe it was part of a special revenue fund. Those get all lumped together sometimes at the budget level. I mean, we don't look at individual programs. It's possible that that could be the case. So that you wouldn't notice that it was only revenue and not expense because it might not have been presented that way in the budget. I can't speak to what the scenario, the exact scenario was, but it is a difficult process and it's a complicated process. Having, having a good relationship with your administration, your management, you know, the superintendent Nikki and having some competence in them that they are retaining the people and going through the process thoroughly is key. And then just knowing a few key indicators to ask about, Nikki and I brainstormed a little bit earlier about what some of, what some of those indicators are. And it's, you know, really for you at a, a board level, maybe a little more specific at the budget committee level, might, is always going to be, one of the key indicators is always going to be fund balance. And watching what happens to that fund balance. But you've got, I mean, $800,000 is a lot of money. Don't get me wrong, but in the scheme of things, it's, it's not going to pop up as a, as a blip potentially, depending on what kind of analysis you're doing to the budget. And so that's where the details are really dependent on having capable, thorough staff that puts, puts that budget together and works with the budget committee. So I'm, I'm trying to make you feel a little bit better, Ron, but, but still there is some responsibility there.
Just, and don't forget that the, the board also put in a policy that didn't exist before. And so when I go historically over the last 10 years or so of ending fund balances, they were all over the place because there was no kind of a target. And so you set a base limit as a board. So that actually made it into something that is, that's far easier to track because now if you're getting below that, then you should have some significant questions. But you set a percentage level for us as a district to be at, at a minimum and then being beyond that. So that allows, as Jeremy said, you know, 800,000, while that would be a big mistake, would not sink the district at this time because we have an ending fund balance. So I think you should not discount the importance of the board at that time, having put in that kind of a policy as frankly, as a stopgap. Like here's something that we have created a safety net for ourselves by creating policy and by requiring that the superintendent and his staff adhere to that percentage level or above. And so I think that that's, that's one of the tools that, that the board put in to place. I guess that's been three or four years ago. That is certainly a helpful thing for you to check that indicator rather than watching an ending fund balance that's always going up and down and is, is in a very far range. It should be far more stable than that. And something that you can easily point to.
I, I concur. That's a really useful tool. I don't know if Nikki, should I go on about some of the other things we talked about now? I'm kind of not sure where my role is in, in this or what, what should be next.
We talked about indicators and everything. So yeah, please share. That's fine.
Okay. One of the things we, we just kind of, Nikki and I spent a half an hour or so brainstorming what some of those things might be. And with remembering that that is probably the one, the one overall kind of high level bird in the sky Superman look at things, you can always count on that one. But as time goes on, there's going to be different priorities, different things happening within the district. And so those, you may change the indicators and your real, I think as a board, or if you're going to have a finance committee like this, your conversation with Nikki should be, hey, these are the things that are really important to the public, to the board right now. What are some key indicators we could look at to measure? And, and it should be kind of a back and forth over time with Nikki, depending on what the the priorities are and/or the hot button issued within the, the district. And so I think an ongoing approach would be to ask, probably not monthly, but maybe quarterly or half year. Hey, should, do we need to, you know, here, let's, let's gain some, gather some key indicators that we can track over the next year or two, and then evaluate those every once in a while. You know, the, the other thing that we talked about and that, that makes, makes it probably really hard at a board level, there are so many detailed accounts. But one way to minimize some of that is to realize that about 80 to 85% of your expenditures in the district are for staffing. And so you, you may want to develop a, a reporting system. And again, one of the thing, I, I guess I should probably start by saying, you don't want to overburden your staff by having them provide you with a bunch of detail that you can't really look at or, or consume in a manner that is useful. And so this would be to pinpoint a few key areas with Nikki, with, with Dr. Morlock as you're, you know, doing planning and, and even as you're going through the budget process, you're going to come up with some of what those hot button issues are for the, the public as well in that budget process. And so you could find a couple of key indicators that each month, when Nikki comes with her financial report, she could give you, you know, a tracking of what those key indicators are, how they've changed over the month or, or quarter, what have you, however often you decide as a board you have to meet. That's not putting a ton of extra work on her, allows her to continue to do her job without a bunch of onerous reporting requirements and still gives you something to track from month to month or quarter to quarter. And you're looking at trajectories here and, and historical values to make sure that fluctuations are either that they make sense, that they make logical sense, or that there's a reasonable explanation for those, those changes. If I could, I don't know how much time we have, but I just want to make sure we don't miss this. So I'm going to plug it in here. Nikki started with internal controls and, and for you as a board, those are the most important thing you can have. One, our, our one comment to the board this year that we have as part of the audit process doesn't have anything to do with Newburgh School District per se. It's a comment that we're making to all of our school district audities about the risks associated with remote working or, or even more specifically changes in working styles. Anytime you have a change, like we're thinking about bringing teachers back into the school, maybe more staffing into the business office. Those changes offer an opportunity for mistakes to happen. They do allow a chink in the armor for fraud sometimes. And there's not anything per se that the board should be doing. It's not like you need to be going into the business office and pulling documents. But a check in with your staff, with the business office, you know, when, when those changes happen, hey, how is this? you know, when, when those changes happen, hey, how has this affected internal control? Can you walk us through, you know, give us a thirty second overview? You know, demonstrating that you've thought about it or have you thought about it? And, and if you haven't, can you please make sure that's on your agenda? I see that as the board's overall role in providing oversight to management. It's not managing the minute details that say, hey, make sure you don't miss this. Being a backup or another stopgap for looking for those kinds of things. And so just asking a few questions and providing the, the reminder really helps. You, you want to work towards that preventative part more than anything else. And so by reminding that the people in charge, you know, it doesn't get too far off their plate. And, and I, I want to say they've done a good job. It's, there's no, there's nothing wrong here. It's, it's that that reminder is useful to them that, that it's something that's important to you. And then they can, you know, if, if they're having issue with, you know, somebody, you know, the procedures are hard sometimes and somebody's trying to kind of circumvent around, they can say, look, I have to go to the board and report this. And, you know, it gives a little more kind of what they're saying. So that there, there's, you can, you don't need me to tell you the various internal controls. Nikki knows them well. And you should just work with her over time at, at monitoring. And, and we talked also about doesn't need to be a monthly thing. If you would ask every quarter, you know, hey, what about, what's going on with the student body funds? How's the bank reconciliation process going? She can give you a list of probably what some of those key ones are. And then you could, you know, just follow up with them and, you know, have it be a three minute thing at part of a finance committee meeting or a board meeting. You know, however you as a board would decide that. But those are, those are the really important things because it keeps it front and center on everybody's mind. And the preventative part of it is the most effective part. Now, I, I could talk all night if you have questions about that, but I, I wanted to make sure that that internal control piece got the, the the time that it was deserved. It's probably the most important thing that's happening within the district.
Yeah, and you know, I, I would agree with that. It's probably, it also becomes the most frustrating for employees out in the buildings because we say, no, you can't order that until I get E D. You know, but it's not because we can say it's Jeremy's fault. He makes us be this way, make you follow the rules.
I'm, I'm okay to be the bad guy. Just blame the auditor.
But I mean, that's why those things are in place because if they're not putting a P O, putting in a P O before purchasing, then that's an indicator that somebody's not going through the process and checking the budget before. They've taken a credit card and, and ordered something. So all those pieces are again the internal controls where we know, okay, this one's turned in a few too many of these. We need to have this other conversation about remind them what the appropriate process is to catch that stuff. So it's, that is the biggest thing is all the preventative things that we need to do with that. Let's see. One of the things that Ron and I did talk about also was how the A D M funding works, but we also kind of agreed that we've been going over that quite a bit through the budget process itself. I'm really trying to hit on everybody understanding the S S F funding and how the enrollment impacts that bottom line with that funding. But if anybody had any questions at this point, that would be helpful at this point. I could answer them now. Or you can wait a few weeks or month, whenever that first meeting is, and we can start the process of reviewing it then as well. So are there any questions on that at this point? Hold on one second.
Is there any questions for me while, while we're waiting on Nikki? I'm happy to, to answer any if I can.
Have you seen a situation where board could have prevented a problem and then missed it? And what could they have done?
You know, not personally. We've been very, very fortunate that either we're such excellent auditors that people are terrified to commit fraud on our watch. Or mostly we, we've tried to be thoroughly selective with the clients we take on as well to make sure we're, we're not exposing ourselves to having to, you know, to be the auditor that's reported in the newspaper when something goes missing. So we, we have been very fortunate. There are probably the one that comes to mind most vividly is there was, I believe it was, I believe it was the city of West Lynn, although it may have been a fire department in West Lynn. One of the city organizations in West Lynn at one point had a a secretary or an employee who ended up embezzling substantial amounts of money. And I don't remember if it was hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars over the course of a very, very long period of time. So here's the one thing I would say to the board. You need, you, you obviously need to trust the people you hire. But trust, but verify is not a bad thing. If you have an employee that's been there a long time, say Dr. Morlock, you know, works another twenty years in the district and Nikki has another twenty years in the district. I don't, I don't wish that on either of you, but let's say that happened. The longer they work there, the more trusted they become by the people they work with and the public. That is the point at which the risk really explodes. And so this was a, a very personable person who happened to like, I, if I recall right, I hope I'm not mixing up my stories, but I believe she liked to go to the, the video poker machines and she was just blowing through the money and needed a way to support that habit or, or issue in her life and was able to, you know, figure out a way over time to kind of skim some money here and there. And I don't remember her exact method or anything like that, but apologize for that. Anyways, she was able to take a lot of money and, you know, the board, the board in that situation could have said, hey, it's, it's time for an employee evaluation. Can we look a little bit closer? You know, when you have somebody that's there for two or three years, it's, there's so many eyes looking. It's hard for somebody in a school district. I feel like to come in and just steal a bunch of money right off the bat. It's going to take them time to find where the chinks in the armor are. And so you always want to look at those longtime employees and you probably want to ask your management, especially if they're taking their required vacations, because one of the times it shows up is it's that person who's so dedicated to their job and they're there twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and then they get very ill. And then we find out, oh, well, funky things are happening here when somebody else has to step in and do the job, or maybe they're the only one who can do the job. Those are key indicate, indicators. Not that you might see that at a board level, but something you should, you know, be encouraging. Morlock, Nikki, as they're, you know, looking at their staff and evaluating their staff. That's one area we always look at is vacation being taken.
Yeah, just to follow up a little bit on something Jeremy said earlier as far as things we can do or reports that I can provide that might be helpful. You might want to think about different things that I can compare and report on. So I have my regular monthly report, but I can always do a supplemental on a particular topic of interest or maybe a trend that you would, you know, like to look at or report it a little bit differently. And that's just a matter of giving me a little bit of a heads up and deciding what your focus is at the time and what would be helpful. So you might think about what some of those things might be that you'd like to hear about. Are there any questions? I kind of want to leave it open a little bit in case there's, you know, something that you've been thinking about for a while and just wanted to ask.
I had a question. If Joe's here for twenty more years, will he have enough socks to get him through twenty years?
Usually because at Christmas time, we usually all try to donate our least favorite socks to Joe because we know he'll make good use of them.
Okay.
And then I feel guilty not wearing them, right? Because I get them as a gift and then I gotta wear them. It's a whole thing.
I'm sorry, Joe. I didn't mean to wish another twenty years on you.
I'm a little troubled here. The people are buying favor with their superintendent by giving him socks. I think there's the
Yeah, except for they're giving me old socks. So that's the, that is the C. You missed the other part, so. Well, Jeremy, I'm only twenty-seven, so at this point I, I guess I could probably make it to twenty.
Oh, perfect. You'll be fine.
You know, and as always, if something pops up after this, that just, you know, you want to know more about, just call me or email me or whatever. Maybe someday we'll go out and have coffee and I can answer some questions, but right now we get to do it this way.
I do commend you. It really is, this is an important thing to do. And it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't need to be done every meeting. But it's an important thing to do once every year or two, at the very least. New, you know, as board members change, just to bring them on and make sure that they're understanding some of those fiscal policies and the internal control part of it, especially those procedures that help be preventative to, to fraud and mistakes from happening. And ninety-nine percent of the time when things have come up in our districts, but it's always been an error rather than some over fraudulent reporting. So.
We've got about five minutes left. Are there any final questions or Nikki or Jeremy, anything else you'd like to touch on?
I don't really. I kind of did the overview and, you know, was figuring that that would prompt more questions and whatnot, but we've covered it pretty well. I'm good.
Yeah, like I've said, anything I've really needed to say, but I'm happy to answer more questions.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Okay, well, as always, feel free to reach out to Nikki if anything comes to mind. And thank you, Ron and Nikki, for working together to kind of present this overview to the board. It's really helpful. And Jeremy, thank you also for being here and we'll see you again in a couple hours, maybe sooner than that, we'll see. But thank you for being here.
You bet. Is it okay if I log completely out then and then come back or shall I stay on?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Is that okay, Greg? Yeah, okay. I think right now we have you on the schedule at eight twenty.
Okay, I'll probably pop in around eight fifteen unless I get a text from Nikki.
Okay, perfect. We've got about three minutes. So if everybody wants to take a quick stretch break and meet back here at seven o'clock, let's start the official meeting. Would any board member like to volunteer to do the flag salute tonight? I guess it could be a staff member as well. That broads our circle. Seeing no volunteers, I guess I will volunteer for it. Is my audio working? Can you all hear me? Okay, okay. Thank you. I just thought maybe that's why nobody volunteered. Nope.
Brandy, I can do it.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah. I just didn't hear what you were saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. If it isn't working at any point, just let me know. Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's see, we've got one, two, three, four, five. Who, or missing Dave. All right, there he is. Perfect. Okay, we've got all board members. Inez is not able to join us tonight, so we are a party of six. So we'll go ahead and get started. Call to order, this meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors. And Rebecca, Director Pyros is graciously volunteered to lead us in the flag salute. So go ahead, Rebecca.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight's agenda, we'll have public comment followed by board comment and superintendent comments. We'll look at our consent agenda. Our reports and presentations tonight will be from Dr. Morlock regarding the school in-person update and from Nikki for our monthly financial report. We'll go into new business, take a quick break, approve the twenty nineteen twenty financial audit. Hear from Tammy and Terry regarding new course proposals, which is always a personal favorite of mine. Go have a presentation for the proposal for a name change for the Dundee Gym and then discuss upcoming board elections. After the regular session, we will adjourn and head into executive session, which is just the board members for the superintendent evaluation. Okay, so with that, we'll move into public comments. And what, what I'll do is call the person's name and then call the next person in line. So you have a little bit of a, of a heads up that you're coming up. And I would like to remind everyone too, that the Newburgh School Board invites and encourages citizen attendance and involvement. The board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, raise questions, concerns or compliments. And I want to thank everybody who has submitted a request to speak tonight and to those of you who sent in comments. In order to conduct a timely meeting, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Requests to speak during the meeting are not accepted. When called, please state your name, your relationship to the district, your place of residence and the subject that you'll be addressing. The board may choose not to address your request if your topic is outside the scope of board governance. We ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. And we also remind you that due to the judiciary nature of the board's role in resolving personnel issues, we cannot hear comments specific to staff or incidents involving current issues under review in the board complaint process. If comments pertain to board actions or specific board members, I ask that you refrain from personal or character attacks. Thank you again for taking the time to be here with us tonight. And as a board, the comments we hear help guide us in our decisions and help educate us as leaders in the community.
Brandy?
Ron, yep, go ahead, Greg.
Do you have Joe give the instructions for interpretation?
I was just thinking that. Thank you so much. Joe, are you comfortable doing that? Gracias.
Para ustedes que necesitan traducción o interpretación, tenemos hoy las personas que van a hablar en español para todos. Así que ahí abajo tiene este un mundo y hace clic ahí y ahí tiene el español. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you. Ron, are you comfortable with being our timekeeper this evening? Perfect. You already said. Okay, so the first person we'll hear from tonight is Charles, and after Charles, we'll hear from Jared. And Greg will magically put you over as panelist. Do we have Charles? Or Chuck? I'm sorry.
Hello.
There you go. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
I had to unmute the stuff there. I've never actually used this before. I want to make a comment in support of the district and the teacher calling out unacceptable teacher behavior and or unacceptable parent behavior. Recording in the classrooms and stuff like that's not acceptable.
Hey Chuck? Oh, I'm sorry, Chuck. We actually can't hear anything that's currently under the complete review process with the board. We can hear sort of more overarching comments on policy or curriculum, things like that. I'm sorry, go ahead. So you're still muted. Chuck, there you go.
Are we allowed to say what sort of curriculum we support? I mean, I support a curriculum that teaches that fascism was wrong, you know? I certainly teach, I certainly support that. And I support the district for calling out any behavior that seems supportive of fascism or racism or any of those things. I fully support those. All right. And that's really all I have to say.
Great. Thank you. And again, I apologize for having to cut your comments off.
Oh, that's all right.
Oh, I think you froze. Thank you, Chuck. Okay, next we have Jared and after Jared, we'll have, I hope I'm pronouncing this name correct, Horan.
Good evening.
Hi, Jared. Thank you for joining us. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Our society has a bad habit that's splitting us apart. We hear only a part of what a person is saying, use the most dramatic portion of it to lump them into a category and applaud or reject the entire person outright. That makes it impossible to find the truth, let alone to work toward a more complete understanding that would serve us all and especially serve the young people who are observing how we talk to one another. Antifa is a label that has been adopted by activists, some of whom have done violence and damaged property in recent months. A reasonable person can both passionately oppose fascism and disdain what Antifa implies. Antifa is not a formal organization, and those who identify with that label do oppose fascism. I doubt any parent in this district wants their child to favor fascism. Oversimplification on either side of that issue we engage in at peril, and we cause damage to our children and their understanding of the world around them. I think we can trust administrators to take care of personnel issues. I think we can know that they're doing things that they can do only behind closed doors and that by law they cannot discuss with others. And I think that's appropriate for us to do. In our divided culture, we're so eager to win that we often miss our common ground. I don't know particular individuals involved, but I do know that probably nobody in this district advocates the violence and vandalism that we've seen in recent months, and probably nobody in this district advocates fascism. I suspect both parties want a good place in as Newburgh to be a good place for our families to thrive. The purpose of the Newburgh School District is to come together to show our children and young adults how to engage in learning and productive citizenship. I beg all parties to set aside partisan agendas and focus on that purpose together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jared. Okay, next we have Horan, and after Horan, we'll have Lily.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you thumbs up as well?
Yeah, it's good.
All right. Um, I'm reading my prepared comments. My name is York Peter, and I want to respond to the Shaheenan Middle School teacher. I'm a father of a student in Newburgh School District. I am the grandson of an anti-fascist who fought German fascism under the Hitler regime. My grandfather and my family survived. However, many of his comrades in the families were tortured to death by German fascists. Fascism must be fought in all its form, where and whenever it occur. I'm immensely proud of the Shaheenan Middle School teacher who addressed fascism.
Mr. Peter, I'm sorry, can you hear me? Please refrain from referring to any specific incident or staff member. And curriculum is okay to talk about, policy is okay to talk about. But let's, we can't unfortunately because of the position that the board is in, is a judiciary body, hear specific comments related to any specific incidences. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Fascism organizations spread their horror in Portland and other locations throughout our great America. Anti-fascists confront them and fight them. We all learn great depth to these anti-fascists for confronting those neo-fascists, including groups that call themselves Antifa. Please know that I condemn violence, property destruction, and the threatening of police officers. The wrong actions by some anti-fascists need to be seen in perspective. Please let me use an analogy. I'm very thankful that all that American soldiers with their allies defeated fascism in Germany. Many brave American fathers and grandfathers gave their lives and suffered. Please also know that I do condemn that American soldiers brought my 10-year-old mother and many other civilians and attacked my 14-year-old unarmed father with machine gun fire from three low-flying airplanes on a country gravel road when he was bicycling home from work. These wrong actions by American soldiers do not make it wrong fighting German fascism. For the same reason, wrong actions by Antifa do not give an excuse to support or tolerate the fascist that marched and yelled in the streets of Portland. Like it or not, you're either a fascist or an anti-fascist. I need to leave something out. Well, at the end, I say, my grandfather told me, never again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. Next, we'll have Lily, and after Lily, Maria.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Hi, Lily. Yeah, go ahead.
Perfect. Okay. Good evening. My name is Lily Green, and I'm a senior at Newburgh High School. Today I come before the board to discuss whether or not high school students should be allowed back on campus for in-person learning. As a senior this year, I have felt the loss of certain high school experiences like football games, pep rallies, etc. But let me tell you what I've gained. I've gained mental health benefits. I've gained friendships with people who I never thought I could get along with. I've gained gratitude for the health and safety of my friends and family. Last meeting, some students from Newburgh High School spoke about how they want us to return to normal. They stated that students in high school can follow social distancing guidelines, properly wearing a mask, and overall staying healthy. That's a lie. These students who say that they will social distance and follow the rules are the same people who call COVID-19 a hoax and wear their masks on their chins. Now I would like to address the members of the board themselves. I want to remind you all that you will not be in the classroom with free return. You will not be there when students hug their friends because they have not seen them in a while. You will not be there when students share the same Dutch Bros cup because they're thirsty. You will not be there when students refuse to wear their masks because it's a violation of their civil liberties. You will not be there. Moreover, what we are experiencing right now as high school seniors is the best possible preparation for university life. It is up to us to keep track of our classes and our homework and to reach out for help if we need it. We are literally taking our education into our own hands. So please, keep us at home. Let younger students who are creating the educational basis for the rest of their lives back. Let them be the first in line to return. Finally, I want to thank the board for allowing students and families to speak their mind when it comes to this major decision. It is not an easy one to make, and I am aware of that. So please, take your time, wait for vaccines, and put public health above so-called high school experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Okay, next we have Maria, and after Maria, we will have Robin.
Brandy, I do not have a Maria in our list, nor someone with the phone number that was provided calling in. So we'll need to next one, which I forget which the next one is.
Okay, if Maria shows up.
You can use the question and answer function to show me what what your name is in the Zoom list so I can promote you.
Perfect. Thank you. And we'll go ahead and go on to Robin, and we'll check back with Maria at the end. So now we'll have Robin, and after Robin, we'll have Ruth. Hi, Robin. Welcome. Can you hear me? I see you're unmuted. Let's wait just a minute. Hi, Robin.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, I'm Robin Wheatley. My question is, what is the timeline for getting middle school and high school kids back to in-person learning? I guess I've never done this before, so I'm not really sure what the format is, but just listening to the other people speak. I guess I have three minutes to speak, or do you guys interact or answer questions? Or it doesn't look like you do.
Yeah, it's just a comment. It's a public comment time, so you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Okay, so my bullet points that I wrote down, I am very much in favor of all our kids going back to school. I actually went, I've grown up in this community my entire life. I went to Newburgh High School. Some of the teachers that I had are still teaching at the high school. I, you know, I have a connection to the school. I, so my bullet points, here's one thing. I want to know why the teachers' union seems to be the only union refusing to allow the teachers to go back to work. All the other, the nurses, police, everybody else has gone back to work. Yet the teachers are still not going back. I've been paying taxes. Everybody in the community has been paying full taxes while our kids get two hours a day, four days a week. They're used to getting seven plus five days a week. Our kids are not getting the education that we've paid for. My taxes haven't gone down any. Our kids are getting shirts. Our kids are suffering. It's not healthy to keep kids locked in their bedrooms for almost a year. Their mental health is suffering. I know. Oh, there was another Yamhill County child. One minute, thank you. One child just committed suicide yesterday. I know this is happening all over the country. The virus isn't going away. We don't know about the vaccines. This isn't a sustainable practice to keep kids at home. You know, kids need to go back. You guys aren't going to be able to get vaccinated for a while. You know, it's like it's time to get our lives back. It's time to get kids back to school. I don't feel afraid of this. Our kids are suffering. It's time. It's really time. I would like to know a timeline. I really would. Everybody wants to get back, and the fact that the teachers are saying no, it's really, really frustrating. When everybody else has had to go back, it's like everybody's there for kids, but not really. You're protecting teachers while the kids are at home suffering and not getting the education that they deserve. It's really frustrating. The kids that don't feel safe can stay home. Let the ones that want to go back, go back. That's how it should be. Am I up? Thank you.
Yep, thank you for joining. Next up, we have Ruth, and after Ruth, we will have Andrew.
Hello? Am I going?
Yes, Byron. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hello. Hi, my name is Ruth Highland. I'm a senior at Catalyst High School. This letter is just as much for my fellow students as it is for the school board. Trust me, I hear you when you say you want to go back to school. I think most of us are feeling that way right now, tired, unmotivated, and ready for this pandemic to be over. But it's not over. From the Yamhill County Health and Human Services website. As the COVID-19 pandemic continues to persist, it is important to remember that COVID-19 is still present in our community, and you should consider the risk of all activities you choose to participate in. Case counts have continued to rise in the Yamhill County and throughout Oregon, and many of these cases are linked to informal social gatherings. We continue to recommend that our community members take everyday precautions to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. We are all in this together to decrease the spread of COVID-19 and keep our community safe and healthy. In regards to categorizing risk, the site also says, this new framework has four risk levels based on the county's current COVID-19 spread. Extreme risk, high risk, moderate risk, and lower risk. Yamhill County currently falls in the extreme risk level. Based on these realities, I do not feel safe returning to in-person classes. Many students and their families share this position. Even if students and teachers take precautions, gatherings are a risk. Groups of students meeting indoors would have the potential to spread the virus, and that's dangerous for everyone. The stakes are even higher for students with pre-existing conditions and students living with vulnerable individuals. We are already putting a lot of pressure on teachers to succeed during the pandemic. It feels important that we don't add even more to their plate for their sake and ours. Trying to run two programs with the same resources just seems like too much right now, and overburdening our teachers will make both programs less effective. We also definitely don't want to endanger students or teachers, especially considering the recent updates on an even more contagious strain of the virus being reported in Yamhill County. We are all navigating this pandemic right now, and we are all being forced to adapt. We have to work through this challenge, no matter how done we all are, because it's not just for ourselves, it's for each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ruth. Okay, next we have Andrew, and after Andrew, we will have Janay. Hi.
Hello.
Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your time. I will speak very generally about the issues. I understand your policies and I appreciate it, Chairman Fetter. My name is Drew Gallagher. I am a resident of Dundee. I'm a teacher at Newburgh High School and also the Newburgh Education Association Vice President. I just wanted to recognize something I think is important to point out. Teachers are public employees and public officials. Teachers are not elected officials. Teachers are not subject to the winds and the constant ebbs and flows of Teachers are not subject to the winds and the constant ebbs and flows of political leanings. Teachers usually have six years of post-secondary education, oftentimes several years of experience. And are hired by district administrators from large pools of applicants to fulfill the important and the sacred job of educating our youth. Uh, they are vetted at the local and the state level before a pain, uh, before attaining this position of trust. And, um, what I would hope is that they are provided with the level of grace and respect commensurate with the aforementioned criteria necessary to become a professional educator in the state of Oregon. The idea of potentially a third party recording a teacher online is a significant breach of trust and potentially a violation of state law if done so surreptitiously. And I would like the school board to discuss how Article 20, Section A4 of the collectively bargained agreement will continue to govern our practices as, as a professional organization known as the Newburgh School District, uh, in the future. Thank you very much for the rest of my time.
Thank you, Drew. I know Drew's got to be pretty familiar with Zoom at this point as an educator, so I appreciate that. All right, next we have Janay and after Janay, we'll double back and see if Maria has joined us.
There are two with the same name, so I'm going to see if I guessed correctly.
Did you get it? Is it winner? I don't see her yet.
Now they both went away.
Janay McDonough. Oh, it looks like it's actually under Kim McDonough.
Yes, there were two Kim McDonoughs and now they are both gone. Which is, but she said the question. I'm really confused. It's just disappeared. There it is. Hang on a moment.
Do we see Maria yet?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Janay, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Dear members of the school board and Superintendent Morlock, my name is Janay McDonough. I didn't know that the specific events cannot be addressed, so this is a different statement than the one I emailed in earlier today. Currently, I am a student at COA and I'm sure that everyone here has had their words twisted at some point. And I have had this happen to me and it is awful. People will blame and judge you for something you did not mean or say within context. Maybe we should learn about how to take context in the class. I also want to say that when I am in class, I expect my thoughts and questions remain there. In the class, if it's about other people listening in or we're sending recordings of my class for others to hear, I would not be able to focus on the learning I needed to do. If you're in an extra help session, you deserve your thoughts to be private, not out there for everyone to hear. Finally, I want to say that there are good ways and bad ways to solve problems. I know it's best to bring concerns directly to the person that you have a problem with. Or if there's a process for dealing with your problems, you should follow that process. Problem solving is another thing we could learn about in school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janay. Uh, Greg, did Maria come back or join us?
Uh, no, no one with that name or with the phone number that was provided is in the list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everybody who spent time to join us this evening to give public comments. Like I said in our, in the opening, it's really beneficial for the board to hear from constituents and especially students. So thank you, everyone. Okay, next we will head into our board comments. Uh, let's see here. Director Brown, do you have any comments this evening? Nope, okay. Uh, Director Woodrow, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to share, you know, we, as a family, we were talking about, you know, reopening. And, uh, you know, we kind of came to the, the consensus that, you know, COVID is kind of a poop storm. But really what I can't, and I don't know how the translators will translate poop storm, but, but really, you know, I stopped to think about it and I, and what I really came to was it, you know, five years from now, that's not going to be the story that I remember. The story that I'm going to remember is all of the hard work our students have done to keep up with their studies. All of the hard work our teachers have done to keep students progressing, all the hard work the administrators have done to figure out how to safely get kids back into school and not overwhelm our health system. You know, all the partnerships that have been created to, uh, support the schools and individual students. Um, th- those are going to be the stories that I remember. You know, the, the short-term frustrations, yeah, they're, they're real and they're genuine. Um, it's, you know, as we've heard tonight, we've heard all along. Whatever we do, there's going to be half the, half the room that's going to think we're dead wrong and morally reprehensible. Uh, but you know, we're humans and we're doing our best and we've got a lot of folks working really hard to get kids safely back into buildings. Um, as I've said all along, the distance learning was a tool, never a goal. Um, it's a tool we're using to help manage our time during this pandemic and it's something that we'll get to the other side of. And hopefully what folks will remember are those, uh, the hard work that folks have put in.
Director Pyros, do you have any comments this evening?
I had the chance to go to a Mountain View Middle School parent meeting where the, the music teachers were able to show how they teach music with, with the program Smart Music. And I was very impressed with, with the program and how it, I wished I had had that program when I was learning the trombone in, in grade school. But I, I, I'm very thankful as Bob, Bob is for all the hard work and all the ingenuity and all the rethinking, all the planning, the, the district office, the superintendent. Um, and the teachers have done through this whole experience. It's, it's nothing we would have wanted to do, but we did it. And, and I think we've done it with grace and with, with fortitude and hope that gets passed on to the students.
Uh, Director Shannon, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I do. I want to just address the argument that some have made recently that Antifa is not a group, but merely an idea. I think this claim is dangerous and I think it's also demonstrably false. It's, in my book, the epitome of the big lie and it's been told by too many people in our political system. It's belied by the fact that Antifa has chapters, social media groups and recruiters. Now, all people of goodwill oppose fascism. I have no objection to anyone saying so. But let's be clear, Antifa is a political terrorist organization whose black cloud members have wrought unspeakable suffering and destruction in our state's largest city. They have rioted, they have burned, they have lawlessly conducted armed takeovers of whole neighborhoods. They have assaulted and even murdered their political enemies. All this a mere hours' drive from where we sit here tonight. They're detestable and I call on all of our political leaders to denounce them, to enforce our laws against them and to throw them in prison where political terrorists of their ilk belong. Thank you.
And Director Mock, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, I have a little bit to say. Um, first of all, um, I had the opportunity, I think I mentioned this before, but I've had the opportunity the week of Labor Day, first week of school up in the Seattle school districts, to be at my daughter's house to help them adjust to the first day of school for my grandson, who was a kindergartner and another one who was a third grader. And my daughter, who's a middle school teacher, uh, science teacher. And also got to watch the teachers that my grandsons were working with. Every one of them was working extremely hard and I know that my daughter does every day. So the idea that the, I don't think anybody intended to say this, but I think they sort of accidentally said that teachers aren't working is incorrect. I am also one who's impatient. I'm impatient about not having kids in school. Cause they're going to do a lot better in school and there's all kinds of other things that go on as that. Equity problems of access for people who can't get into the classroom. It's not fair. It's not the same for everybody. Not everybody, and inequity is increased by that process. So we need to, we need to get back into schools fast as we can. And I've been impatient about this for, for the whole time and I get more impatient every month. So far, we've been cautious in this district about opening schools and I think that's been generally the right thing to do. I don't think we want to be where like Oswego is, having announced dates and now backing off because they cannot do them. You can't open on those dates. We don't want to have our parents planning and then disappointed. So I think the general point of caution is good. Um, I'm, we're going to hear some more about this later this evening, uh, when Joe's going to talk about plans. And I'm really hoping that we can find a way, particularly for the early grades, to get started as soon as we can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move into our superintendent comments. Dr. Morlock, if you're ready.
I am, thank you very much. So I've been a teacher and being a teacher means talking nearly every day, all day. It means getting the wildest questions and having to decide on the fly, not only what the answer is, but how to address this in a curricular and developmentally appropriate manner and context. I'm also fairly certain that you don't have to be a teacher to have been initially flummoxed by a question, especially if you have kids. Then phrase something in elegant, maybe even misleading way. If I thought for a second that a teacher was encouraging pre-teens to put on balaclavas, pepper spray police and light the federal courthouse on fire, this would be a very different conversation. But I don't believe that and I don't think any good faith reading of the transcripts would. Again, I understand why this was so upsetting to lots of people. I hope that in the days ahead, we can cool the rhetoric on both sides of the argument because we have so, so much to do. And we cannot accomplish it being so far apart. There's a huge amount of misinformation, misunderstanding and disagreements about the definitions of terms, Antifa, anarchists, Nazis, fascists, white supremacists. I'm not going to go and engage in that conversation in this context because we will not be convincing anyone that their viewpoint is not in agreement with other viewpoints. We have policy and administrative procedures that govern the teaching of controversial materials. A link that can be found on our website. Those policies are named INB, India November Bravo and INBAR, Studying Controversial Issues. I encourage you all to review those. I don't think anyone likes where we are collectively right now, regardless of which ideological side we are on. Part of making this better, instead of making it worse, is giving some grace and some good faith to each other. This means talking directly to someone rather than posting your first thoughts on Facebook. That means genuinely listening to someone with different views and trying to understand where they're coming from, rather than waiting until it's your turn to tell them how wrong they are. It means that when we find ourselves overwhelmed by politics, news and social media, we redirect our attention to the things beyond politics that binds us together. Like reaching out to an old friend or going on a walk with our neighbor. We have exceptionally critical work to do in the near term, right here in our district, and we cannot be successful if we are arguing over minutia. We have an in-person school reopening about which I will be talking a bit later tonight. We have a capital construction bond to rebuild and renovate significant parts of our school buildings and whose work begins in earnest on Monday. And we have so much other important work ahead of us as a community and we must do it together in good faith. In other news, I'm switching gears a little bit. I did want to highlight that tomorrow, we will be delivering our 500,000th meal to students in Newburgh since the beginning of the pandemic back in late March of 2020. It is an amazing amount of work and our deepest gratitude goes to Shiloh Physic, our nutrition staff, our educational assistants, first students, our transportation provider. Larry and his maintenance team, um, everyone and anyone else that I'm sure I've forgotten has been involved in this incredible effort to feed um, this part of our community. So my humble thanks is all I can offer you. Um, but it is truly one of the most critical operations we have ever run in Newburgh Public Schools. So tomorrow will be the day at the half-millionth meal, um, provided for students across the, across the area. So very proud of that. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
That is amazing. And, and I will let you know, having, uh, three students, obviously not in, in-person learning, getting those school lunches delivered is just a little bit of normalcy. And, uh, I think it's impactful. And also the fact that the team delivers them is huge. It's removing a huge barrier for families. And I really applaud tire staff working in that. Thank you. Uh, okay, next up, we've got our consent agenda. It's a relatively short one tonight and I would entertain a motion. Did anyone hear me?
I moved that we approved the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Well, Joe, with your 30-second break, are you ready to jump into in-person learning update?
I am. Okay. Um, thank you, Chair Penner, members of the board and the community. I know we have a large group here tonight. I don't know why this is of any interest to anybody, but we'll go ahead and go through it. So this is a, a big update. We're going to cover a lot of ground and try to catch up, uh, folks. I'm going to try to, to fix some misinformation, give some new information about what's been happening, um, since all of this has been going on. So, um, I'm going to give some information first about the Ready School Safe Learners. We did get an update on January 19th. It is a full seven days old. I'm sure that there'll be more updates uh, as we continue forward, but this is the latest we have, uh, so far. So, um, I think you heard from our speakers tonight. I think you have heard, uh, time and time again, that we've been talking about, uh, both staff and student safety being a top priority. I think that, uh, we're going to continue to reiterate that message. You know, we will be living with this virus, um, for a long, long time. It continues to change and grow. You know that there are three, at least currently, the ones that we know of, three different variants, um, from the original. Um, we want to make sure that we're ensuring the health of our communities. Uh, we know also that the best tools are physical distancing, face coverings, um, you know, washing your hands and doing all those things that you're all supposed to do. Um, we also want to make sure that during this process, as we do going through reopening, um, that we're going to take all those necessary steps to mitigate all of the risk and protect ourselves as a school community. So one of the, uh, key messages out there that we want to make sure we reiterate over and over and over again is that the success with increasing in-person learning has happened, uh, when all of us take a measured approach. Okay, so when we are, uh, following all those protocols with fidelity, actually following the steps we have, the ones that we've both developed and the ones that have come from O H A and O D. You'll see that some of these slides, and I'm going to stop here for a second. Did some of these slides come from the Department of Education? So I've used some of theirs and I'll, uh, add on some of ours in a little while, but I want to give some updates from the Ready School Safe Learners. Uh, so the, uh, recommendations and the things that come from, um, the Department of Education specifically speak to, uh, starting with the youngest learners first. Um, creating some conditions to establish some safety routines and cohorts. We've not done this before to do all these kinds of things to have kids coming in and doing these processes. So we need some time to do it. You will see later tonight when I show you the steps that we're going to take through and the time that we, uh, measured out that it's about us getting used to being able to do it well. Uh, we believe that we have a schedule that, uh, should help us get there. Um, one of the key things that came out of, um, the RSSL, uh, change and, um, also the governor's message for January 1. that she delivered on the 23rd of December is that operating schools in person is now a local decision. And opening schools also relies on implementing all of the public health and safety protocols with fidelity and also working with our local public health authority. We have to, as a school district, follow all the requirements outlined in the Ready School Safe Learners, and we also have some, some changes we'll have to begin to make in our blueprints as we change our instructional model, instructional model from comprehensive distance learning to limited in-person and hybrid learning systems. So the metrics have changed from mandatory to advisory. They do expand the opportunities. Some of the things that we use to determine when it is most safe or when it is safer to come back in, we'll be looking at the county metrics. We look at those, of course, that come out every week. We are required to submit data to the OHA and ODE every week about how many students were serving in person so they can keep track of that information to make other kind of determinations. We are also looking, of course, at community case counts, which I will go over in a little bit, and we need to think about those when we're determining whether to open or not for onsite instruction. We also, by using all these protocols and taking this measured approach, we're working to ensure that we're not bringing more of that into it. If we have cases at the school, then we shut down, we go back to comprehensive distance learning. So all of the efforts that we make to get up and running, and then we get to go back into CDL, and we're trying not to be disruptive to families and to students and to staff. So it's a, it's a big thing we have to change out. The health and safety protocols are both required and needed. So you'll see that we'll have to go through a process of training all staff, retraining folks, working with students. Again, we've not done this in buildings together, and so learning these new protocols, you know, when you're in school, you learn how to walk in line and, you know, pay attention to things and get to class on time, but we're also going to be working on safety protocols for masks and, and other kinds of issues. So we, in each school also, we are required to have a designated leader, so everybody will know who that person is, who will be taken care of, hearing about those things, anonymous sharing of concerns. If somebody thinks that they're not following the rules, we don't have enough personal protective equipment, or the handwashing stations aren't clean, or all those kinds of issues, that will actually, we'll have a named person who will then be notifying public health from there on. So every staff, every school community has somebody to whom they can report issues as they come up. So limited in-person instruction, which we have begun slowly and are going to continue to grow, and I'll show you that in a little bit. It's also going to be included in the comprehensive distance learning that we're doing now. So again, we've talked a little bit about it in the last few meetings, but it's specifically targeted for specific groups of students who need educational, relational, social, emotional, curricular, or other kinds of supports, of things that, that they're truly struggling with. Those cohorts can be no larger than 20 students. Right now, we're, we're far smaller than that and doing it sparsely. They can also, also only be on campus for two consecutive hours, and you can't just split them up over time, right? So they come on for two hours, and then we have to send them home. Okay, so let's look into our advisory metrics. Again, they went from mandatory to advisory, and that came directly from the governor. They've also changed the metrics we were using prior that were even more stringent, and they've changed those, revised them down toward the Harvard Global Institute, or, I'm sorry, Harvard Global Health Institute metrics, and I will show you those in just a moment. The guidance that we get continues to change all the time, so we have to be aware that, that as the state situation with COVID changes, so shall the guidance that we follow. It seems to come in bursts, and we'll have three or four meetings, and then we'll find out that it changes again. So just be aware that we will continue to keep you as updated as possible of what's happening. The RSSL, of course, is being seen by lots of people for input, and they're continuing to roll those out to us, so we have the latest information to make it easier. So again, I talked a little bit about this. When we return to onsite instruction, we're gonna have to go through a whole set of training for staff, and we do designate a school leader, so there'll be somebody to whom to report. We, when we do return to onsite instruction, we will also have the comprehensive distance learning. This is a commitment that we made to families if they wish not to return. We will also have CDL available for them. We also have to remember that if we were to have cases that would require a shutdown of the school, that we would go right back into CDL. So I know that our staff has sharpened their chops doing CDL, so we could get back into that probably more easily than the first time that we would have to start it. So here is a little shot of the metrics I wanted to give you. These are the updated ones based upon the Harvard Global Health Institute recommendations. And as stated earlier, actually by one of our visiting speakers, the numbers really do poke, push us toward starting with elementary first. So I want to look at the county case rate, and I'll show you what our county case rate is on the next slide, and then I'll come back to this. But it's all based upon, for us, because we're the sizes that we are, we are be looking for, if we are above 350 per 100,000 over the last 14 days, which we are, I believe it was a 407, that we should be in distance learning. And then somewhere between 200 and 350 students, that's when we began our elementary onsite for hybrid. And then as we move toward additional onsite and hybrid, those numbers go down to between 50 and two, and fewer than 200, and then below 50, fully onsite, back in and ready to go for everyone. Again, I was gonna show you the, the metrics. So during the holiday season, whether we're testing enough or not, I don't know, but it did take a dip. And then coming out of that holiday season, we started to see another climb. So we are at a case rate of 100,000 of 407. We had dipped downward. If you see from the beginning of December, we went from 436 to 367 to 329, and then began to climb back up. So at that 407, we're still what they would consider distance learning. We know that there are some, some ebbs and flows of, of the case counts coming up in the next several weeks, especially as vaccines get out and that begins to help stop the spread. So if your school is located in a county that does not meet the advisory metrics, we will have to offer onsite testing for symptomatic students. So we will have to have staff identified who will be doing those tests for rapid tests for COVID-19. As a side note, it's no, it's not the brain scratcher for those of you who have had one with the big, long thing that goes all the way back in to do the, the test. It's a, it's a shorter swab that allows, that allows it to be done quickly and onsite, and we will have, of course, isolation rooms while we're doing that testing if we should determine that we believe that student or staff member is symptomatic with the possibility of COVID-19. We got a little update from OHSU as they were doing some forecasting. This, again, came from them last week. I want to give a little bit of a contextual cue about where we are in Oregon. So it's hard to see in a little bit of screen, but if you can see the little red dot, that's Oregon, and the other states are in blue. So we are in kind of the lower third of being able to get out vaccines. That has been one of the challenges, challenges for Yamhill County and challenges for Oregon as a whole. So we've not done exceptionally well getting through those. Additionally, they have a long-term kind of a forecast on what they were planning on working on as far as the fires come in. You can kind of see where they actually did model it pretty closely and where the actuals were. So they have also modeled further out, and they can see, you can see we're down, going toward a dip, and then we may have another, again, possibility of resurgence of, of the virus. So this is, again, doesn't include some of the newest variants because they are so brand new, and this model may not bear out, but it is important for us to, to consider that we don't have all of the information yet as we go forward, understanding how this virus will work. So a couple of requirements, when and if we return into in-person. First of all, we are, as employers, required to provide masks. If you don't have them, face coverings, face shields, things like that for anybody who comes in. They will be required for all students, kindergarten and up. This is not a political statement. Thou shalt wear a face covering when you're in school in the buildings. That's just the way it's gonna be happening. So it's, I think this is an important thing to remember. We've heard from several folks, well, it might be hard for my so-and-so to be able to wear a mask. Well, then they'll be very comfortable in comprehensive distance learning. So we're gonna be, this is one of our critical points about reopening in school. They are, as I said before, not a choice. We will help students find places to be, and they would have to actually continue in CDL if they're unable to do so. And we do have some, of course, some special protections under ADA and IDEA that are fairly detailed, but by and large, all folks will be wearing face coverings. That's the same thing for staff refusal. There really is no choice. We are wearing face coverings during the whole time that we are there, anyone and everyone, and we'll require them of any person who does enter the building. Same thing for transportation. Face coverings are required during that thing. That also means we're not gonna be doing any eating on the bus. I know sometimes you like to snack on those. We're also going to try to keep the air flowing in that bus, so we're going to ask, and all this information will come to you again as we get closer to it about busing and what have you, but we're gonna ask you to dress warmly, so we're gonna try to keep the windows open and keep the air flowing, right? So we're gonna be really, really stringent on that. Okay, let's take a look at the quick tentative timeline. There is a theme song for COVID planning, and everything can, might, and will change is the name. You can find it at your latest, at your local ASCAP music store. This happens, we've been doing this over and over and over again. I know that there is often some frustration because people say, well, you've been planning for a long time. How come you're not just ready? Because the plans change all the time, the rules change all the time, and we're continuing to, to work toward being ready for that. I also want to say that, and I put it in all caps and in bold at the top of this slide and in many other slides, that this is all tentative. This is our current thinking right now. We have 100 million things to do before we get there, but I do want to give people an idea of what it looks like. So next week, we believe we'll be getting the first doses of vaccines available for the Newburgh Public School staff. It will be less than a third of what is needed. So you've probably heard that there was not as much available in the stockpile as had been previously reported at the federal level, and that getting it out to states has not gone, or getting from states, getting to the states and then from the states to the counties, and depending upon which county you're in, some have been more ready than others. So that requires then, and I spoke about this at our last meeting, that we would be prioritizing staff depending upon their role. So looking, of course, at support staff who are in contact with students or who are in contact with each other as they're working toward this. So any of those folks who have been doing those things, our earliest grade teachers, as you saw from the metrics, we are focused on starting on our elementary school kids and anybody who's doing the limited in-person instructional staff, right? During this time, we will continue doing the limited in-person instruction for K-12 students, and we'll continue to ram that, ramp that up over the next several weeks. We are targeting the mark, the week of March 8 for beginning with our kindergarten and in-person. I'm gonna pause there for a second. The reason we're looking at March 8 is because we are going to have access to the Moderna vaccine, which has a 28-day wait period between the two doses, and this would allow us then also to have the immunity built up at the 95%, be 95% effective by that week. I know there are some other districts who have said week of February 25, or February 22. I will tell you that many of those districts have also been the ones that have set and broken and set and broken and set and broken dates. We're trying our best to give what we think is our best guess, again, not knowing what the development of the virus will be, but this, based upon our timeline with our vaccine, that we know that we will get a certain amount. We, I'm sorry, we believe we will get a certain amount on Monday. I will believe it when I actually see it. But that we would be able to begin kindergarten in person. So again, this assumes that we would be getting that vaccine on that week of February 1. Just want to be clear about that. So assuming that that does happen, we would be ready to start with our kindergarten students to begin with in the week of March 8. The limited in-person will continue for our K-12. Week of March 15, we would then be ready to start first, first grade, be the next week right after. So we'll do first kindergarten, then first grade, and again, those would be effective, 95% effective for those who had their first dose on February 8 or before. The week after, so it's two weeks, because we do have a spring break there in the middle between the 15th and the 29th, we would bring in both second and third grade to begin in-person. So again, we're starting with a one grade and then another grade, and then we're gonna go to two grades because we believe that we will have figured out some of the things that will make it challenging for us to start to fill the school. And then the week of April 5, this would be fourth and fifth grade. And again, the vaccine would be 95% effective for those who had their first dose on March 1 or before. Following up that, the beginning of the fourth quarter of our school for secondary students, we are planning on targeting the 19th of April for secondary schools that, again, we've had a lot of feedback about the challenges of opening up the week before, two weeks before we start that quarter. So this would give them a full fourth quarter by starting on April 19. We do, of course, as I said before, and then every slide private, prior to this one, limited in-person is listed there, so we'll continue to, to grow the number of kids we're able to bring in as both the staffing allows, as well as just getting them in and getting them the support they need. So all that kind of ramps up. So I'll go to just a quick summary, just to go back over what we just talked about. We believe that we'll get our first dose of vaccines next week on Monday. Again, that is tentative. That is probably fewer than 30, or it's less than 30% of staff. Week of March 8, we go to kindergarten, and then we go down a list. March 15 is first grade. We do have spring break the following week after that. The week after spring break, we would be looking at second and third grade, and then a week after that, fourth and fifth, and then starting at the beginning of fourth quarter would be the week of April 19, and that would be secondary schools beginning their in-person instruction. Couple other pieces of important information. So some students will be brought in during this time for limited in-person instruction. We're gonna base those on the at-risk criteria, low attendance, failing classes. I know we've talked about making sure we wanna, we have, want to have as many kids be on track to graduate, and we know this is hard, so we will work you on some stuff at our high school level, same thing with our middle schools as we try to figure those, those parts out. So limited in-person will continue to grow over time. We will be leading up to that hybrid learning, so hopefully we'll be fairly well-practiced at our secondary schools to launch right into hybrid when it is time. And I want to be clear, we said this earlier, and I'll say it again, the students who wish to remain in CDL can choose to do so for the rest of this year. We have heard from many different parts of our community, and some folks are not ready to come back. Some, of course, are in COA this year. Others are, wish to remain in CDL. And we made that promise before at the beginning of this year, and we will honor that promise to be able to allow them to stay in CDL. We also know that because of the way we've done some staffing, we may not have the same teachers in hybrid learning or in comprehensive distance learning. We will communicate that if that were to be necessary coming up in the future. We have surveyed staff, but we also now will be surveying parents in the coming weeks about how many are planning to come back so we have a good idea about how to begin staffing, and then, of course, providing time for all of our educators to prepare this next transition because it's a significant change from what they're doing now and how to navigate those things without being too much of a burden. So I hope it's also not lost that we are looking forward to seeing people in person. I can tell you that the majority of people, there are some who love to teach online and be online and learn online, and I actually think that's great. I myself was a terrible online learner. I'm really much better in-person than like to do those things, and I understand that, and I think the majority of us are that way. We all miss the kids. We miss each other. We miss our colleagues. We miss all those things. And it's really important that we do this super safely, and I realize that that is sometimes frustrating for folks, but we have to do the best we can for our community. We have to do the best we can for our kids and for our staff and their families. So this, again, tentative timeline, I hope it gives some kind of a light to be kind of what we're looking at. And then we still have lots and lots and lots of works to do between now and then before this is a reality. So just wanted to, I've used a lot of words at you all at once, but I wanted to give you as a complete and update as I could for tonight. And then I don't know if there are any questions. I will jump out of this. I can see all of your. Uh, and then I don't know if there are any questions. I will jump out of this. I can see all of your, uh, screens.
Go ahead Rebecca.
And. It, is this going to, going to be, um, a hybrid, um, with the, with the kindergarten and with, with all the, the, um, classes coming back? It will be a hybrid two-hour, one day, two-hour the next day?
Yes. Great question Rebecca. Yes, it will, we'll be going into hybrid. I think one of the things to, to be, um, to remember is that as we get into this, we may, uh, have to be jumping back out of it. So we want people to still be kind of in that practice to be able to do that. Um, we originally, and we'll have to revisit this again, because we're going to go back and we've learned some things before. Uh, and we'll, before, when we had written our blueprints, so we will review our blueprints again. Um, but the way we had set it up originally was a Monday, Tuesday, or sorry, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. Um, with a Friday for a day for people to connect with, uh, students and catch up and do those things. So it'll probably be similar to that, but yes, it would be going into the, the in-person, uh, reopening would be a, a hybrid situation. Unless we were to get down below 50, um, cases per 100,000. I, I don't see our trajectory hitting 50 cases below 100,000. By the end of the school year. So I'm going to assume that's probably not true. But yeah, so we'd be into hybrid. Yeah. Good question.
Oh, I have a couple of questions. Um, can you, uh, briefly to the logic of starting with the lower grades first and working our way up? And then, um, secondly, uh, how long does it take to get one of those COVID onsite tests, the results back?
Uh, the results I'm told are about 15 minutes. So it's not a super long time, um, to get the results from the COVID test. So that, that was why. And then, um, part of the logic, uh, for choosing the lower grades, there are a couple of things. One is, uh, uh, just due to the risk of, uh, passing the virus that, uh, students at younger grades, uh, are at. Uh, have a lower ability to, or they'll have a lower viral load essentially to be able to pass that, uh, virus on to adults or to other ones. And so as the children get older, they actually, uh, have, uh, more ability to, to pass the virus. So part of this is a safety issue. The other one also is that, uh, for really young kids, um, you know, kindergarten, first, second, third, this is really hard to do. I know it's hard for everybody. So I want to be, I've got a middle school kid and a high school kid, and it's hard for, we're all having a lot of fun. It's, it's hard for everybody, but starting with our elementary school or youngest kids, uh, to get them into school, um, we're concerned that, uh, they're, uh, being held, uh, to this kind of online learning thing is going to be very hard for them. So we're going to get them in first to get them caught up as much as we can. You know, and accelerate the kind of learning. But that's why. So it's partly due to, to health and partly also due to, to, um, starting them, getting them back in, uh, quickly. So we can get them moving along their education.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
I do, I, I did, I have one. Uh, you mentioned that the, uh, because you, because it's unlikely we'll be at under 50 cases per 100,000, that will probably be in hybrid the whole time. Uh, does that need to apply to the whole population? Or is it possible for younger kids to be in school more like full-time? Even though we're a little above 50?
So that's the, that's, that has to do with the case rate, right? So that's the between, um, that's the ca- the county case rate for, for 100,000. Um, it does say that we can do both, uh, onsite, uh, and hybrid. So if we were to get below 200 per, between 50 and 200, that would be a consideration that we could move elementary to being onsite.
So I know there's lots of considerations there and I'm not going to try to tell us what we should do, but there is, uh, for the sake of the families and for the sake of the kids, and I think possibly for the sake of the faculty, and they'd have to weigh in on their own on this. There are some advantages in being in a solid full-time, because then you're, because if you're still in hybrid, you still have all the childcare problems you had. Basically, you're a parent. And so the ability for the family to get back on its feet financially, if that's an issue, would be a lot better if some of the kids could be. There a whole time. So that's just why I'm thinking we, I'd like to see us keep that option more open.
Yep.
And if the guidelines allow it, to think about whether we can accomplish it, even if, uh, it's not down under 50.
Right. One of the challenges in, in having everybody there, uh, onsite all the time is that we won't be able to, to deal with the social distancing part of it, right? We would not be able to have essentially the 35 square feet, uh, per person, the six-foot differential between where people are. Uh, because you wouldn't be able to fit them all in, because you'd have all students in the classroom. Um, so that's, that's the next, kind of next level of that is, it's not just about having them in, it's where we put them. So. If the, if we were to plan to just do K-3 and leave fourth grade and fifth grade. Um, out and just leave them in CDL or in some other kind of a hybrid thing, you may have enough room, but talking about spreading, uh, folks out, then you have a staffing part of it too. So. Yeah, we're not taking anything off the table for sure, but, um, but I think it's important at least to remember there are some complicating factors.
Sure.
I got a question there Joe.
Yep.
Um, so you said, uh, a little bit ago that if we have, um, you know, we go back hybrid or however we go back, if there's any case spiked up, we'd have to shut back down like some other school districts have had to do, totally get that. Um, getting the younger kids in, I get all that. Um, I keep advocating for the seniors. If we, you know, between the kids that wouldn't come back because they just don't want to, and, uh, you know, they'd want to stay online anyway, or they'd be scared. But getting those kids back maybe as seniors on a, uh, on a super light hybrid. And then, then if they can't handle like the one girl that called in earlier and, you know, was talking about how they would react, you know? And if we were monitoring that really closely, it seems like, I mean, we could kind of test it out on our seniors in a hybrid. Earlier than that, even if it wasn't a non-grading situation where they're, they're starting to come back. And, uh, learning about college and what their future could hold and how the schools could still help them. Because once we do come back, if we, if we actually do in April, it's just going to be a, a mad sprint to the graduation. And there's not going to be a lot of time to be talking about all those super needed issues. So. I just keep, I keep going back to seniors saying, you know, why can't we just kind of test them out a little bit on this? And if, if, what, what, what would happen if the numbers turn out kind of good and? Everything was kind of turning out okay and it would build some confidence up in the kids and the parents and the staff.
Yeah, I mean, part, part of this is just straight up logistics, right? So I think we, we talked a little bit about before. Um, you don't have really very many courses that kids have only one grade level take, right? So if you were trying to bring them in, then you've got folks who would be, uh, teaching online CDL and then also trying to teach in hybrid during the same time period. So we would have kind of a staffing part of it, right? That, so. Well, we're looking at, uh, limited in-person, uh, support, especially for students who are struggling the most. I know that, uh, our high school, uh, administrative team and the teachers that have been working together with them on this. Have spoken specifically about kids who are falling through the cracks, who, and, and of course they want to start with seniors because those are the ones that need the most support. And they don't want them to be not in their CDL class because that's where there's continuing to try to get that content. You know, I think that that's, uh, we went back and forth. And of course I laid out something early on like, oh, let's just bring back all the high school, whoa, 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 whoa. We've got quarters, we've got stuff to set up and we want to make sure that. Um, you know, we have, uh, enough staff to, to teach them all correctly. I mean, to be able to teach the correct classes. So. Uh, it really does come down to, there is a lot of, there are a lot of logistics, uh, just in terms of scheduling and trying to make sure that we would have enough staff to teach the right subject areas to be able to do that. Nothing's off the table. You know, we, uh, will be re-engaging in all of our blueprints, reviewing all of those. We'll have, um, both, uh, we'll have some, uh, representation from both our, uh, classified and, uh, licensed associations as part of that. Got to have, uh, folks who are going to be in the field looking at the, the blueprints to determine, can we do this? Can we do that? So. That's why I also said tonight that this is tentative, because we may find, uh, some additional solutions that people say, hey, I think we can do X, Y, or Z. I will tell you, we're taking nothing off the table. Um, and all ideas as they come in, we turn them around and take a look at them, uh, and figure out if we can put into play, because, uh, you know, focusing on safety, try and get kids in, uh, but also any kind of creative ideas we can, we can use to, to make it happen. We're also willing to, to look at all those. So. Yeah, it's, they're not getting lost in the shuffle, but I, yeah, I certainly understand that. I think that we'll have a better idea when we survey our families to find out who's planning to come in and who's not. So we can, you know, we want to have an idea of our timeline first and say, okay, what is it that you're planning on doing? Because then we'll be able to staff and figure some things out. So that'll be our next data collection point and we'll hope, we will, uh, we will hammer email boxes with those, uh, requests and, you know, maybe even go door to door. Check in on people and say, hey, where are you coming back to school or what's happening? So we, that piece of data will be very important for us.
Joe?
Yes.
Is, is there any talk about, um, sports?
Well, there's lots of talk about sports.
No, but I mean, it, uh, I know they, uh, oh, um, the organization talked about having winter sports and then, uh, a short footballs or fall sport season and then a short, uh, track season or spring season. Is that still? In negotiation?
Yeah, they're, they, uh, kicked the can down a little bit. I think they just announced recently that we're not doing any full, at least they don't have any pathway for, uh, contact sports, full contact sports. Uh, so the OSAA is, they're following also county metrics. There's a little bit different. That's what puts, put us in a bit of a bind for, um, our performing arts as well, because they follow the OSAA guidelines. Uh, for, uh, restarting. I mean, I think I've made the, the comment before, you know, who would have thought that, uh, choir was the most dangerous class we teach? So. Um, those are still, those things are required to be outside. So sports are currently still on, uh, only ones that can be done outside. Um, for practices and for other kinds of things. And then, um, the OSAA is continuing to try to figure out what to do, you know, shortening and shortening the seasons. Um, I think they're going to have a pretty big challenge on bringing students into indoor facilities to keep them safe. So, um, uh, they, I'm not sure when they're, I shouldn't be looking at my calendar, but OSAA will do an additional update this week and we'll have more information. And I can send that out too. Well, we can put some of that out, uh, for the community, kind of a, a digest version of what's happening, the latest and greatest with OSAA. But yeah, thanks for your question here. I had failed to mention that before. I thought Dave might ask that question, but focused on the seniors. So it's all right.
All right. Well, we went a little bit over, but that is such important information. And as always, keep communication open with Dr. Morlock if you have further questions, um, and want to follow up with him. And thank you for your thorough report as well.
Welcome. Can I quickly mention that, uh, Greg will be sending out an update with a bunch of that information. We will post these slides too. So if you were trying to frantically take notes, that's for not just you, but for the community. Uh, we'll have these available so they can review them later. We want to make sure everybody has the, the latest information that we have.
Great. Thank you. And you can update it daily.
Yeah, I might have to. I might have to.
Things are changing. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We have, uh, our monthly financial report with Nikki. Are you ready?
Sure. Um, I'll make it fairly quick. It's pretty straightforward this month. Um, looking at the revenue report, um, just a few things to note with the current year taxes, we're already basically at 100% collected. Um, which is good. It's pretty normal for this time of year. Um, but we'll probably end up over a bit what was budgeted in that area. Um, I left some of the other projections low. I think I talked about them last month. Uh, as far as our rentals, obviously our buildings aren't open. So some of those things that we know have ratcheted down. Because of the space we're in right now. So I left those low. And you'll see for the beginning fund balance that I did put in there, um, our audited number. So that's reflected in this month's report. And so at this point, we're looking at estimating just over 10 million for an ending fund balance at the end of the year. But I say that cautiously because there's lots of changes that may still happen as Joe has alluded to in his report. Um, if we come, as we come back into in-student or in-person learning, uh, we're going to add sub-costs and a lot of those things that are not in the budget right now. And a lot of those things have led for, led to our expenses being lower than normal. Um, so there's lots of things that can impact this, um, by the end of the year, but we're, we'll be watching those and monitoring them as we go. And one other thing I wanted to point out, just, just so it's clear, on the expenditure page, um, near the bottom. Just for your reference, the contingency and the unappropriated numbers, I always put them in there as if they're spent. And I do that just because I want, uh, to be sure we're acting like that that is unspendable money. Um, it's just, in my mind, it's better to see the bottom line with that already gone. Um, just for planning and everything, but when you see that down there, that's a projection, but that's just meant, um, to have that set aside as a saving. Are there any questions on that this month?
Nikki, I've got a, just a quick question. Um, under the revenue, there is an R1941. I'm service, maybe other districts within the state. It's abbreviated, so it's hard to tell what that is, but could you just, just describe that? It's $125,000 in revenue.
Right, right. Sometimes we will have students from other districts attend our district. And so we'd have revenue from other districts coming in for our services and stuff. Um, this year that is, that's going to be lower. Um, because not all that is happening at this point, but that's what that's for.
Thank you.
Yeah, question that popped up. We, we had the work session earlier and we were talking about, you know, benchmarks that we can track to, to follow things. And, you know, the big one that we've been tracking this past several years is the ending fund balance in our new policy. And I was wondering in your reports, would it be possible to, when you put that projected ending fund balance, to put what that percentage is of our budget so that we can? I know I can ask, but just so it's right there.
Yeah, that's my problem. Yeah, I can calculate that for you guys. That's not a problem.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And it is a little more complicated because we, our policy doesn't refer to the entire general fund. It refers to the entire general fund minus the, um, the restricted, the restricted funds. So it's net of the 2% and the 5%. So. If you look at her numbers, the, the number up here under expenditure, that 10, 7, 1.0 million, the 2.67, 7 million, that's the 2% and 5% of the budget minus those numbers. So, uh, it's not a straightforward math problem. You have to kind of figure it out. And I keep forgetting every month and having to remind myself. So that's how. So, but, but as I look at this, am I reading, am I reading this correctly? That the 10 million is already having assumed, setting aside the 2% and the 5%?
Um, at that point there, that is, um, included in that.
So 2% and 5% is part of the 10 million. So, and so that 2% and 5% is about 3 and a half, 3.7 or whatever. So we've got almost. Uh, well, we don't have it because you just said we're going to spend some of it, but if we were to have that at the end, we would have almost three times as much as our minimum required.
Right, right. As far as, as far as the board policy and that's something, you know, we've talked about before that that, we really need that 7% to be the floor. Because when you're looking at a budget this size, you know, a $4 million, uh, ending fund balance is good. It's better than a $300,000 one. But, you know, based on our monthly payroll and stuff like that, that is not a huge number. Um, so I, I look at that as the floor and not wanting to go below that. Um, and getting above that's a bit safer. I feel a little bit better about that. Um, but we do expect, you know, more expenses throughout the year. And as things change, um, we just don't know what's going to happen. And sometimes we just have to pay for some more technology. We have to, you know, make sure students are connected. Those are just things we jump out there and do. And we don't always know when that's going to happen. So.
In the budget originally before, I guess we adopted that budget just before we understood COVID was going to mess it all up. Had us spending about 3.7 more than we were taking in, because our, our income balance was, was scheduled to streak a little. And so this is actually better than that, but just, uh, so that we were not swimming in money in, in our original plans.
Right. And at the end of last year, like we talked about those last several months, um, we saved money, uh, by not having substitutes. We didn't have transportation for athletics. Um, there's various things that we slowed down on. Um, if staff resigned, we looked carefully at them to see whether we should film at that point or wait to see what's happening this year. So we did a lot of things or tried to be very careful coming into this year. Um, preparing ourselves because we didn't really know what we had to expend and where, where we're going to be and what we would have to provide. So. That number that any of them balanced from last year is looking really good.
You make a good point, though, that, you know, the 7% is a floor and a minimum, you know, that's that's what we don't want to go below. It's not once we get to that, then we've we've reached our mark, you know, we'll get to the point, you know, if we stay on track as we are, we'll get to that point where we'll start to have that wonderful discussion about how much of an ending fund balance is too big of a balance. We're we're not there yet. Um and I don't want folks to get too excited thinking, you know, when we get to an 8% funding balance, well, then we've got money to play with. Um that's not at all how, you know, this one board member sees it, that that 7% is a a minimum um rather than an ending point.
Nikki, are we putting any money towards pers this year in this budget? I'm not finding a line item for that.
Yes, we do have that scheduled. I believe the transfer was 300,000 that was budgeted. Um so at the end, what was that?
That on this document?
Um, well, that's part of the transfer line. So on the expenses towards the transfers, that 500,000 is for a transfer to the purse fund and then a buffer for our food service fund if it needs it. Um that fund is is doing really good this year. Um so I'm not sure that we'll need to transfer that. So we may we may be ahead in that line item at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Okay, any other questions for Nikki? Yep. All right. Thank you again for this. And as always, pass on your questions and contact reach out if you've got further questions. Um, okay, so let's take a quick five minute break and meet back here at 8:31. Chocolate.
Hey, what are you doing down there? Huh?
All right, we're back to 8:31. Let's give our fellow board members a couple of little bit more of a chance to join in.
Well, now there's four. When you said that, there were only three of us.
Well, and I don't have seconds on my clock. So really, instead of a five minute break, this could have been like a four and a half minute break. So I just want to give a little grace to make sure everybody gets back.
Brandy, are there a lot of people attending the meeting?
There were. I think our highest uh was about 100 and maybe five. I'm not sure. Great. You saw it was about 105 total, including us. Uh now it's down to about 73.
I think I saw 111 at one point.
Yeah, 90 94 attendees was the highest I saw. We're we're still at about 50.
For attendees. Yeah, okay. Yeah. And there would have been 20 in the in the in the workshop at that time. So, yeah, it'd be over 110.
And they find out that the audit's next, they're all gonna go away.
No, no, these are the hardcore followers that stay after the break. They're they're the they're the tried and true.
It's been a while we talk. They're down to 73 already.
People are jumping out. Now we love it. Stay with us. All right.
We sure.
Oh, go ahead, Rebecca.
No, I was just gonna say we sure appreciate all their attendance.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, okay, it's 8:33. Let's go ahead and get restarted here. And we're gonna start off with our 2019 2020 financial audit.
Okay, um I will introduce Jeremy Gingrich. He was our auditor this year, our lead auditor that came to our building and dared to come visit us um to present our audit.
Thank you, Nikki, and thank you, board, for taking the time for this important um review. Uh each year, the state requires you to have an audit of your financial statements. And so this is the report generated as a result of that work that we've done for you, the board. While we do the work directly with the management of the district, uh the ultimate responsibility for our reporting is to you, the board, and not necessarily to them. So that's why we schedule this time each year. I have what I think will take about five to 10 minutes worth of presentation. That should leave time for questions, should there be any after that. Um and so I'm just gonna dive right in and and try sharing my screen so that we can walk through how the documents together. Um I guess before I do that, uh thank you first of all to Dr. Morlock and his staff, Nikki, and the rest of the business office for um working with us. This was a difficult year, as you can imagine, for us as it is for the school. And we were able to make it work um, I think remarkably well in the circumstances. Nikki may take offense at that. It did seem to go pretty smoothly considering the challenges we had. So thank you for for making that happen. Um I will also spend just a minute or two on the audit process itself. So each year in the late spring, really early summer, most of the time, we will do a process of reviewing the internal controls of the district, seeing if there's any changes. Um and then doing some risk assessment and planning uh based on those uh under the understanding of those controls uh that we we gain doing that work. Once we've done that, that guides us to the work we do that you would traditionally consider um audit work, the field work, where we come out, paw through the documents, annoy your staff, uh that sort of thing. Once we've done that work, then there's a whole another part of the process, which is the preparation of the financial statements and our our development of our opinions on those financial statements. Uh so that's kind of a brief overview of how that process works, and that leads me right into the audit opinions. And so I'm gonna skip to, I'm gonna attempt to share my screen. I think I've gotten pretty good at this. So hopefully you'll end up seeing what I'm I want you to see. Um maybe a nod from somebody if they can let me know that they're seeing uh the report with the opinion. Thank you, Nikki. I see the thumbs up. That's great. Um the first report we issue is the the traditional, what's considered to be the audit report. This is overall the financial statements of the district. It's the one um that we perform under our professional standards. Um uh as, you know, accounting standards and auditing standards. Um and so we offer, we offer three opinions. This is the first and probably the the most comprehensive or covers the most information. And our opinion is at the bottom of page one. And we've issued what's called an unmodified opinion. Um that's one of three unmodified opinions or one of three opinions we issue uh to the district. Unmodified simply means that we didn't have anything we found uh where we needed to modify the opinion. So nothing that we discovered during the audit rose to the level of um requiring us to amend this report to to point out specific items to you, the board. Um so in school district terms, that's a grade A. Uh the next report that we issue is way back towards the end of the document, and it's the uh report required by um the state of Oregon. Uh so in addition to requiring an audit, a financial statement audit, they ask us to look and uh at certain items highlighted here in these bullet points, look at these items each year. And um we've we've looked at each of those items and then our report back is um just saying that we didn't find anything other than there was an expenditure. There was a couple of expenditures, the seed appropriations uh that happened in the federal and state grant funds. So the special revenue funds is what we call those. Um in the instruction category, it went over by the 548,000. And in enterprise and community services, it was over by 20,487. Um these things happen from time to time. Uh Nikki can provide the exact details, but it had to do with some transfers and the timing of those transfers. Um I think if you maybe we can continue on the presentation. If there's questions, hold those to the end if that's okay. Um and then we'll move on to the next report, which is the report that we issue over the federal federal dollars that you receive. So federal grants have a lot of strings attached with them as far as reporting requirements and compliance requirements. And so each year, because you exceed the $750,000 threshold that requires what's called a single audit, we perform an audit over those federal funds. Um our opinion on this um like over this area was also unmodified. Uh so that's on page 89. Then we have one other report where we don't actually issue an opinion. Uh we talk about the internal control over the district. And this is a place where had we had we discovered in our audit, we don't, we don't issue opinions on internal control. That's a whole nother type of audit. Um that doesn't happen very often, but um we do look at internal control as part of developing our audit procedures. And so this offers us a place where we define some something um so significant that we needed to bring it to the board attention and and memorialize it in a report. This gives us a place to do that. We did not have any such items. So while it's not an opinion, kind of the grade A, uh I guess you would say, again, in this area. While we're in the financial statement document, um it's really the district's financial statement. So I won't spend a lot of time going over numbers per se, because you've really rehashed these numbers with Nikki month to month throughout the course of it a year. Um but I would like to call your attention to some major sections. So on page 16 and 17, we have what's called the government wide financial statements. And these are uh statements that are issued on in the same um accrual basis as economic and business entities. Uh so same economic standards that they would use in their financial reporting in that they include assets and liabilities, such as your capital assets for your buildings and and other infrastructure type items and vehicles, that sort of thing. And then also liabilities, pers obligations, bonded debt, those sorts of things. On page, starting on page 18 and going all the way to um page 21, you have your governmental fund statements. These are issued on the budgetary basis or the same basis uh as the information you look at on a monthly basis. So shouldn't be any surprises in this information. Um and uh so those are issued uh you're starting on page 18 and for the next four pages. Uh after that, we get to the notes of the financial statements, starting at page 22. Uh those go all the way to port page 46. Um I will call your attention attention just to just to two of the specific notes that seem to receive a lot of uh attention or people want to know where they're at. So on page 30, you have the note about capital assets, and this gives a little bit more detail over the capital assets of the district. Um, you know, for additions of depreciation, maybe if equipment is purchased or liquidated, uh that can be seen here. And then on the next page is your long term debt on page 31. So this is your bonds and um the changes throughout the year there as well, as well as some of the future costs of those bonds uh towards the bottom of the page there. Um I skipped, I got ahead of myself and forgot to tell you about what I think maybe is the most important thing for you as a board. If you're not gonna look at anything else in this document, uh take a look at the management's discussion analysis on page six. This is um your management's um either information that they want to present to you or that they're required to present to you. Um and it is uh comparative information side by side uh at the government wide level. Uh so it's useful in that you can see some comparisons and there's some charts and tables in your here you'll see as I flip through as well as at the very end, um a couple of paragraphs about what is forthcoming in the next year and and down the road. Uh so it gives some future looking information as well. Uh that's the extent of the um presentation I have, the things I need to call your attention to in the financial statements. Um shall we do questions on the financial statement and then move to the board report? Shall I do the board report and and have questions for all of it? What what would you prefer, Chair Better?
Jeremy, let's see if there's any questions regarding this.
Certainly.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, let's keep going. Thank you.
Okay, um we'll move on to the report and I'm gonna have to share my screen a separate window here. So let me get that set up really quickly. Think I might have the right one here. What are you guys seeing from my screen? Are you still seeing the management discussion and analysis?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. We'll we'll give it one more go here and see if I can override that.
The miracle of technology.
I I feel like I've been getting pretty good at this, but I have my glitches as well as everybody else. So now you should be everybody else. So now you should be seeing a letterhead where it says risks and uncertainties arising from COVID. All right, this is our report to you. You know, it has a cover and all that kind of good stuff. I've skipped right to page three, where we talk about the one thing we wanted to tell you as a board. This is not a finding per se, as much as a warning or something to bring to your attention about the risks associated with just the change in internal controls. And while we didn't have any issues either at Newburgh or, or really any of our other school districts as a result of that change to remote working or some remote and some in person. Anytime there's a change like that, there is the risk that internal controls can be, I, that they can either kind of come apart and not work for a period of time. Mistakes can happen, maybe not get caught as in, in a timely manner like the, the internal controls are designed to do. And so it's just a, a kind of a shout out to the board. Hey, keep this in the back of your mind. Check in once a month, once a quarter, you know, at a board meeting and say, hey, how's it going? Are things still working smoothly? Are you being able to continue effective internal controls, that sort of thing? The rest of the report is just like our audit reports, more standardized language where we would modify that language. Were there anything we needed to bring to your attention? We did not that all those required comments are on pages four to six. The remainder of the document is just some other information that could be of use to you, thinking about the future, some places in the financial statements where there's accounting estimates. Upcoming accounting pronouncements, which we will work with your, your staff to implement. The original engagement letter. So this is useful to see what you hired us to do if you were not privy to signing it at the outset. And then the document that we request from your management to sign with their written statements about things we asked them about during the audit. So if you really want to know what are some of the nuts and bolts, the things we care about a lot enough, enough so that we would have them put it in writing, you can refer to this, starting on page 22, and then several journal entries that were posted as part of the audit process. That's what I have for my board report. And now, yeah, questions if there is any on, on either the financial statements or the board report.
Thank you, Jeremy. Are there any questions from the board? Ron, you look like you're thinking. Oh, Brian, you got, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, on page 37, the assumed asset allocation for our pension plan. How closely does that relate to our actual asset allocation is? Is that based on our asset allocation? Or is it just an?
That is a pers, that is a table of how pers has their assets allocated. It comes directly from their, the pers financial statements. And it's included here so that there's background information about the pension and how it's managed. I don't know that it's a, it doesn't correspond at all to how the, the district's funds are spent. It's the, the entire pool together, all of pers.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
I apologize to the interpreter as well. I forget in these presentations, I want to get them done so that you guys can move on to other things. And I talk very fast, so I apologize for that.
Thank you, Jeremy. And thank you again too for coming and spending time with the board in the work session prior to this meeting. It was very helpful.
Certainly, we view it as a bit of a collaboration, even though we, you know, we're there to find stuff. We're constituents of school districts as well. And so I feel it's important when we can provide anything that we, we do so.
Great. Thank you. All right.
You all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you too. Okay, let's move on to our new course proposals with Principals Arian and Principal Mick Elliott.
Randy, you actually need to entertain.
You're right. That's the board action. My mistakes. See, this is why Greg gets paid as much as he does. Very good at his job. Okay, I would entertain a motion. From a board member.
I'll move that the school district board of directors approve the audit report for the fiscal year ending June 20, June 30th, 2020 as submitted.
I second it.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Right, passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Principals Arian and Mick Elliott. Whenever you're ready.
Excuse me. Okay, thank you very much. And we're gonna see if the, the technology magic works for me as well. So let's see here.
Tammy, I'm here, but I don't know if you can hear me because I'm having tech issues.
Yep, we can hear you, Terry. Thank you. So I'll let you know when we get to your slide. Okay, so hopefully everybody can see the screen. So okay, so we actually have course proposals this year, not only from Newburgh High School, but from Mountain View Middle School and Catalyst as well. So this is going to be a team effort. As always, we take a look at our vision and mission and our goal is to ensure that when our students graduate from high school, that they can be successful contributing citizens of the 21st century. And we always strive to create partnerships with parents in our community. So whenever we're thinking about proposing new courses and what our course sequences look like for our kids, we always keep this vision and mission in mind. Our goals are, are simply to prepare students for college work and life. And we do that through providing post-secondary opportunities, career pathways, and most importantly, I think, relevant and meaningful opportunities for our students to learn. So before I get started in presenting our new courses, I did want to give you the board an update on the courses that we proposed last year and that you approved so that you understand kind of the direction that we're going. So last year, I believe we proposed six courses in total. Two of those courses were aligned with a new program that we were entering into called Willamette Promise. We currently have Honors Biology, which articulates with Biology 102 at Western Oregon for four credits, and Intro to Medical Sciences, which articulates with Biology 109. And as you can see, we have 26 students. So one section of Honors Biology, and then we have Intro to Medical Sciences. And I believe we have three sections of that. So quite a few students interested in those courses. Even though we didn't, we didn't propose these courses as new courses, they were courses that were already on the books. We do have other classes that we are articulating with both Western Oregon University and, and Oregon Institute of Technology. So Anatomy and Physiology is articulating six credits for Biology 103 and 200. English 4, which, which is essentially Writing 121 at the college level, is articulating four credits. Honors Chemistry is articulating Chemistry 104. Exploring Computer Sciences articulating Computer Science 106. And then Spanish 3, 4, and 5, and native speakers can articulate anything from Spanish 101 to 203 at the college level. I did not put the number of students on there. I will say that there are many, many students who are taking one of those courses. And the great thing about the Spanish articulation is that they are given an assessment that really evaluates their level. So they may be in a Spanish 3 class, but they could earn as high as Spanish 203 at the college level, depending on how well they do in those courses. So as you can see, a lot of these courses have great enrollment in them. We're super excited about the possibility of our students being able to earn credit. And as a reminder, the beautiful thing about Willamette Promise is that students don't need to commit to taking the college credit until they know what their grade is going to be. So they'll have assurance that whatever they put on their college transcript is something that feels good to them. Okay. In terms of the CTE coursework and proposals, last year, we proposed musical theater. It currently has 22 students. Chamber Orchestra, which is like the advanced orchestra, has 25 students. Mobile App Development right now has 10 students. And so based upon our cohort model, that would just be one cohort section of that. Makerspace was hugely wildly popular and continues to be. We already offered several sections of Makerspace and we will offer those each quarter all year long. It's been really exciting to see the kids, their, their work developed on a computer, sent to their teacher, and then the teacher actually makes the 3D molds of what they do online. And they're oftentimes put up on display in our front office. So I'm really excited for the kids to come back and be able to see those. And then Woods 1 and 2, 190 total students have forecasted so far. And I have broken that up into Woods 1, 22 students. Oh, I'm sorry, Woods 1, 190 students and Woods 2 currently right now, 22 students forecasted. Those classes are not going to start until quarters three and four. So going into our new course proposals for this year, I'm going to start with Terry. And I believe she has Megan here to help her present. She will present the first slide. So Terry, take it away.
Or Megan, if Megan can hear. Okay, I'll go ahead and jump in. So good evening, board. Thank you. My name is Megan Hewitt. Currently, I teach seventh grade language arts and then drama. The course that we're looking at adding is called Civic Action and Leadership. This will be an elective course for seventh and eighth graders. The goal is that through this course, students will be able to practice active, respectful listening to ideas that are different from their own, argue both sides of an issue, and recognize that there are merits to all perspectives. And then take action using elements of design and project-based learning on a citizenship project to better their community. So they will be looking to forge relationships with community members and, and people in our government to be able to propose changes. They will also participate in mock trials to understand the judicial processes of this country and create collaborative working relationships within a diverse group of people to be able to think critically and creatively about how to solve problems around them.
Okay, I think maybe I'm on again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Terry.
So I think, okay, so the biggest reason I think that we kind of went to this is we have limited electives, but we also didn't have anything that was social studies based for those kids who really wanted to do that. And there were some kids last year that kind of asked for something like this. So I'm sorry, I'm just having internet problems because of the snow. So thank you, Megan, for jumping in.
Of course.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay, great. Thank you both. All right. So the next course is a course proposed by Newburgh High School. And as you know, based on several of the courses that we proposed last year, CTE, creating CTE pathways continues to be a goal of ours. We do have several CTE pathways, but as you know, with the passage of the bond and about $20 million going to a new CTE facility at the high school, we are really excited to continue to expand. One thing that we have noticed that we believe that our kids could really benefit from is a career exploration course. So an entry level or what we would call a gateway course for all of our CTE pathways, it would provide students with opportunities to explore careers, especially careers within our community. We would want to develop partnerships with industry in our community so that we can, you know, encourage students to either go directly into work in our community or maybe go to college and then come back and serve in the community where they grew up. So we want to expose them to a variety of businesses and industries, work-related experiences if possible. And then on top of that, this course would include training and filling out job applications, creating resumes, and even the opportunity to go through some mock interviews, again, hopefully with people, local people in our community. So the second course that we're proposing at Newburgh High School is a sports, literature, and composition course. And again, tying back into this idea of creating relevant and meaningful opportunities for our students to engage in academics. We just know that this would be a wildly popular class for our students to take. Shawna Peterson is our English Department Chair, and she is proposing this course. She's a fabulous teacher who connects very well with students and really tries to understand what students are interested in. And so we believe that we can align this course to Common Core State Standards so that we could fulfill the requirements for either grade 11 or grade 12 for graduation requirements for kids. So this would be, we're going more toward like a menu of options for kids, ensuring that the Common Core State Standards are there and that they have options that are interesting to them. So this would provide students with an opportunity to study, study literature and composition through a sports genre. And as I said, this is relevant to many students. I think I sold Newburgh High School short in estimating that about 550 to 600 students each year participate in athletics. I think it's actually a little bit more than that. And then according to the NCA, we're talking about upwards of eight million high school students who participate in interscholastic sports each year. So we believe that students will really engage with the content of this course. It will be interesting for them. So we're really excited to see what potential numbers would look like for that. And again, this would be a replacement for a traditional English 3 or English 4 course. So I'm actually now going to turn it over to Tim Graham, Jeff Smith, and Trevor Thompson. And guys, you can just give me the cue when you want me to advance your slides.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tim Graham. I'm the principal at Catalyst High School. And I'll give you a little bit of background on how we came to decide to move forward with Law, Public Safety and Security Pathway at Catalyst. Troy Meister, can everyone hear me? Okay, I was getting an echo, so I'll take one piece out. So we have the Austin Family Grant for our Friday Career Explorations, and we are going out and visiting a lot of different career sites, different apprenticeship sites, and doing a lot of that on our Fridays. This year has been a bit, a little bit more limited, obviously. But one of this, one of the spots we went to last year, Salem has the, has a big career tech center, and they had lots of different career pathways. And one of the pathways they had was Law, Public Safety Pathway, where students are trained to, to eventually lead to a possible job in law enforcement or a fire department or fire and rescue. We have two young staff members who have experience, Trevor Thompson experienced in firefighting. And Jeff Smith has been, he was in the military, a veteran of Afghanistan, and then he was a police officer prior to coming to Catalyst. And we thought, what a perfect opportunity to, to begin a pathway at Catalyst. We've also been talking closely with Newburgh High School to make sure that we, we don't duplicate things we're doing at Newburgh High School. So we can, instead of competing with each other, we are gonna, you know, have, have different options to deep each school. And then, and students at both schools will be able to access opportunities that we provide in these career areas in each of the different schools. And fortunately, I have a young energetic group there. And I, I mentioned it to Jeff and Trevor, and they got together with Jane Idler, and they, and they ran with it. So I'd like to say I did a lot of work there, but I really didn't do much besides turn them loose. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and Trevor and let them present what they have come up with for, for this pathway.
Thanks, Tim. My name is Jeff Smith. I currently teach at Catalyst. I'm a math teacher and teach electives as needed. And Tammy, I'll have you go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Trevor and I, we just want to say to the board members, Superintendent Morlock, principal staff, and everybody else listening on, thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to be able to share these courses. This is some fun and engaging and exciting stuff coming up for the high schoolers in our district. The pathway going over the Oregon CTE pathway and figuring out courses and whatnot, we have found this plan of study to kind of fit in the best way to where the courses are going to all start off with an introduction to public safety. Just a one-credit course going over all the different ideas and things in public safety pathway. Just a one-credit course, uh, going over all the different ideas and things in public safety pathway. And then from there, a branch off into two main areas, uh, one being the law enforcement services pathway, and then the other one being the fire management services pathway. And you see, uh, later on, those pathways can actually cross over again, uh, meeting the Oregon two-plus-one Mathways Model uh, initiative, uh, for an integrated Math Three, which would be a statistics course with a focus of the public services. Next slide, please. There we go. Um, the first course, Intro to Public Safety, this would be the entry point, as I said earlier, for all students entering this pathway. This is for students that are interested not only in firefighting and protection or law enforcement, but social work, protective services, public administration, anything in corrections, judicial, judicial or probation career areas. Uh, Trevor and I, as Tim mentioned earlier, have many years of experience in these fields. I'll let Trevor talk about his a little bit later on. Uh, I have over seven years, uh, military and then law enforcement. I used to be with Clackamas County before coming over to the teaching side of the house. Next slide, please. And going on the law enforcement services pathway, the first course the students would see in this area is the, uh, Criminal Justice one and two. Uh, here, students would be able to study social life, social change, and the social causes and consequences of behavior. They'd be able to learn and apply anger management techniques to resolve conflicts, investigate case studies, and laboratory forensic and trial procedures. And, uh, going back to it, yeah, I have, uh, experienced national, international, and local-level investigations. Next slide, please. And Criminal Justice Two builds off of the previous course, uh, through interpreting standard operational procedures used in the criminal justice system. Uh, using a social science research model to investigate, uh, contemporary American issues of social inequality, patterns of behavior, forces for social change and resistance, and also learn how the social systems work. As well as students now would be able to take on leadership responsibilities to demonstrate the knowledge and skills they learned in the course, to collaborate in projects and work activities. And then fun little fact, that's actually me in that picture, uh, during one of my investigations about six or seven years ago. And then I'll turn it over to Trevor for the next part.
Is Trevor available?
Trevor, you're muted. I just-
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry, tech difficulties. Um, hello. Um, so, um, as you can see, we're on Wildland Firefighting One. And so this one, uh, as Jeff mentioned, you have to take the introductory course for any of these pathways before, um, engaging in it. However, uh, Wildland Firefighting One is actually going to deal more with learning techniques on reforestation and prevention methods. Um, so when we had the fires not long ago, you know, everyone's kind of scared about that. Um, it was amazing to me how many people knew so little about preventative measures that I had thought was already something that was common knowledge. And/or a lot of the information that people were spreading that was not good. And so that's kind of led me to, um, some of these ideas. But they, we would learn techniques on reforestation, forest management and stewardship. Um, you know, we like to say in Oregon, "Plant ten trees for every one that's cut." Well, that sounds nice, but when you plant all those trees and then you have droughts, which leads to disease and congestion, all of a sudden, we have a tinderbox. And that's kind of what's happened over time. So they'll create professional relationships with local fire departments and private firefighting crews, learn proper communication skills required for stressful and hazardous situations on the fire line, and that could also go into other, uh, fields of work. And also learn about physical requirements needed for this profession. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide. Uh, Wildland Firefighting Two, uh, this is going to get more into the hands-on stuff. So experiencing supervised training activities, putting theory into practice in Wildland Firefighting, uh, taught by an instructor with years of experience and in partnership with professional firefighters. Uh, they'll continue studies on fire management, weather-taking, radio communication, but also, at this point, they're going to start to implement the physical training regimen requirements as part of the course. So it also has some PE credits in there as well. Um, it's nice to have these ideas, but if we have a whole bunch of students that really aren't, um, in the physical condition, it's not going to help them very much once they leave school. Now, the cool thing about Wildland Firefighting is you don't have to have a college degree in order to get on the fire line. Uh, there's a lot of private crews that hire. Um, they might be able to get internships through the Oregon Department of Forestry, maybe. Um, and there's a lot of cool opportunities, but if they do want to go to college down the line, uh, some of these jobs right out of high school, you can earn upwards of thirty-five thousand dollars within six months or less. And for, um, having those opportunities available to them and having this type of knowledge, um, at their disposal, I think would be a really, really cool opportunity for all students, whether they're interested in college or going into the trades. And so, yeah, that, that's our pathway for law enforcement as well as, uh, Wildland Firefighting and structure, which we'll get to later. But, um, yeah, thank you so much for your time, guys.
Okay, so, um, before we maybe take any questions, I do just want to reiterate, um, something that Tim Graham said, which is, well, first of all, I just, uh, want to commend, uh, Tim and, um, his partnership with the high school. Uh, we really do, I think, uh, work well together and we believe that, uh, it is important to serve all students regardless of which building they're in. And I'm really excited, uh, for this opportunity for, um, the public services pathway because I know that it will serve students at Newburgh High School just as, uh, we often serve students at Catalyst through some of our other pathways. So, uh, thank you, Tim, uh, and Trevor and Jeff, uh, for that. So, um, we're happy to take any questions.
You have a question, Tammy? Uh, this is Dave. How you doing?
Good.
Hey, uh, so are the classes at Catalyst open for the kids at HSN? Sounds like they are.
It is, yes.
Cool, cool. Um, and vice versa, can those kids come back over to the high school and take those classes too?
Yes, actually, we oftentimes have, uh, Catalyst students who take their core classes at Catalyst and then will come over and access our CTE courses, uh, culinary, uh, construction, things of that nature. So, yes.
Well, this next one, I, I wish you guys would have been here fifteen years ago and done this. So thank you so much. These classes are cool. Kids are going to dig them a lot, I think. Those are stuff that, that kids are really going to be interested in. I have just one question for you guys as administrators. Um, are we comfortable that our current, before we add classes, have all the curriculum they need? Every teacher, say, at your schools that are presenting right now. So I mean, do, are, is our curriculum strong, um, in materials, textbooks, and everything for current classes before we add?
Well, um, so I'm not sure, um, I'm the right person to answer that, Dave, but what I can tell you is that, um, we do have some work to do district-wide in terms of curriculum adoption. As you know, we have already, um, gone through the process of piloting, um, adoption for math, and I know that we have our sights set on moving forward with other adoptions in the coming years. So, um, I would say, you know, we definitely have some work to do around curriculum adoption, uh, in terms of materials and opportunities to offer these classes and resume our other classes. I think, I think we're in good shape. Um, there are lots of, uh, teachers who, um, you know, uh, have worked really hard to, uh, develop a scope and sequence and design curriculum. And again, uh, always with Common Core state standards in mind. So that is really our Mirth Star or our guide, uh, in, in terms of developing our curriculum.
Tammy, last question. Do you, I mean, that's a good answer. Do you think that the board needs to be more engaged, making sure the resources are there for textbooks and curriculum for classes throughout? I mean, I know you can only speak for the high school. Terry can speak for the middle school. Um, but you and Tim, I mean, you know, do we need to do more work to, you know, we have with this bond, I mean, should there be money spent on textbooks and curriculum for every single teacher that's out there? That's kind of a big question.
It is a big question, and I don't know that I want to speak. Yeah, go ahead, Terry.
Well, I think that I can answer from being at the district office and being an administrator in a building. There is an adoption process and the people at the district office know that process and they budget money for those years that there is an adoption. Also, when we put in new course proposals, one of the things on our form is, how is this going to affect the budget? Especially in a very tough year, we look at those things before we actually put in a course. So are there things that we have in our building? Are there free resources out there and organizations that will help us? Are there people that we put in place to teach these classes that have the expertise? So I would not be somebody that would say, yes, get involved, think about all of that in the bond. I think the bond is already put together for certain things and we have an adoption process. And I know that the district office would say yes to courses because that we have talked through these things and we have looked through these things. Will things change in years to come? Sure. But I think that, uh, buildings and the district office work together when we have to get supplemental material. So I wouldn't have put in this course, and I don't think that Tammy and Tim would put in courses that were undue financial burdens on a district when we know we're in a tough time. We are looking at how to actually, uh, bring together the district and buildings and work together and also give our students the electives they need.
At Catalyst, uh, we do have some, we have supplied money in the Austin Foundation Grant that is geared towards CTE and the career exploration, and we can use some of that for the, uh, supplies and materials needed for the the, uh, courses that we're going to be introducing. And that's not a forever grant, but we've got about a year and a half on it, and they've, they've shown some commitment towards, uh, continuing to, to fund our CTE effort that, at Catalyst.
I think you guys might have misunderstood my question, though. I, I mean, those are great answers. Hi, Tim, by the way. Uh, I think that these classes are awesome. I'm a hundred percent behind them, and I know you guys have thought that a lot really well. Uh, current classes, current stuff that's offered before these new ones come in. Is the curriculum there for all the teachers? And, and, and if it is, then great. If it's not, then that's something that needs to be looked at. That's my question. It's, your new classes are awesome, by the way. So thanks, you guys.
Any other questions from the board?
I had a question. Um, yeah, I'm in support of all these classes. I'll, I'll vote in favor of each of them. But I noticed, and this is just a kind of a procedural question, in the approvals, that some of the approvals are not filled out, and I was just wondering what that, why that was. Um, you know, looking at like the NEA school representative isn't signed off on some of them and...
Yeah, the only thing I can say, uh, Bob, is in this, uh, trying time of not being in person with other people, I think, uh, there were a couple of people that had difficulty connecting with people to get those initialled. Um, so, uh, and then we were under a timeline to get those, of course, to, um, Greg and Derek, um, to turn around and, and make sure that you had ample time to review them as well before the board meeting. So, um, simply just, I think, for lack of resource and accessibility to get some of those signed.
That's- And at Catalyst, Connie Rice is our, our building rep, and she, uh, she was actually part of, she's our CTE coordinator, and she was part of planning the class. Uh, and I, I had a conversation with her and she was having a hard time figuring out how to get in and sign those. So we probably circle back around with her to get her, I, I maybe I'll drive out to her house and have her sign it.
That, that was my assumption all along, was that it was just a technical thing, but I just, it stood out to me, so I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
I'm going to interject right there that we missed getting the course proposal for Intro to Public Safety in the packet, so I emailed that to all board members about ten minutes ago so that you have that course proposal as well.
Um, I had a question on, on the career exploration course. Um, could you just kind of speak, uh, sort of to what the stu-, expected student experience in that course would look like? You know, is this, uh, something where you're just exposing them to a lot of different career paths so they are aware of them, or is it the, the idea that the student is coming in with the career path that they think they want and you're letting them explore that? Could you speak to that a little?
Yeah, it really is more of an exploration or introductory course, Brian. Um, it, it's an opportunity for kids to kind of take a look at what career pathways are out there, um, which careers require no post-secondary education, maybe some, uh, trade skill training, uh, two-year training and, um, you know, college-level training, um, so that kids can make informed decisions really about what interests them uh, and what career path they'd like to pursue. In terms of the student experience, so again, exploration, but I think, you know, a really relevant piece that we would like to embed in this course is the opportunity to engage with people in our community, uh, through, uh, a variety of industries that we have here locally, uh, whether that be, uh, going out and doing some site visits or having those people come in and speak to our kids about, you know, what their industry looks like and what opportunities are available to, to, uh, kids. So a little bit of both of that.
Thank you. Uh, and then, uh, my second question is, are there any courses that are going away as a result of us adopting these, that these would be replacing? It sounded like the sports literature one would probably replace a more traditional literature course. Um, is that the case for any of the others?
Yeah, so in terms of the career exploration, uh, there will not be any course that goes away. That is, that would be an additional course. We currently have a post-secondary success coordinator and her job really is, um, all things, um, career in college to help, uh, kids access anything from, you know, how to do a financial aid form to how to fill out a job application or where to access career opportunities. And, um, she would just be using part of her time to teach that course. Uh, for the sports literature course, um, you're exactly right. We, we are looking to provide more of a menu of options for, for the very um, purpose of providing, you know, relevant, engaging classes for our students. And so that course potentially, because it aligns with Common Core state standards, could replace English three or English four. Um, it would mean just less sections of English three or four to add sections of the sports literature class.
So at Catalyst, uh, we're such a small staff that our teachers teach, uh, a multitude of, um, electives throughout the school year. So this will just replace electives that Jeff and Trevor already teach. Um, they, they get, they get a lot come across their plate as far as being more flexible and have to, have to be a little more creative with, with how we do things.
Do you know what those electives are that they would be replacing?
Jeff, you wanna, what, what electives are you doing this year?
This year, doing, uh, like a marketing and business overview intro. So, um, but that was just something new that we had just recently brought out, and I believe the high school teaches that as a CTE pathway more formally.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions too, uh, although, uh, Brian stole my traditional question. Thank you, Brian. I'd like to see that be spread around. I have a question, I think it's for Trevor. Uh, you mentioned that the firefighting two would have a PE element, and I thought you, heard you say it would count as a PE credit. Um, do, do you want to clarify about that? Is that what you meant to say?
So, well, Grant, whether or not it will give a PE credit, I'm not certain. Um, I want it to. But the thing is, when you're taking these courses, there is a ton of rigorous exercise. And to not implement that in the training or in the course would be misguiding a lot of these students.
Um, I understand that and I appreciate everything we can do to help students be fit. Uh, I'm, I just am concerned as to whether the, and I know this is pointing at you, Trevor, I don't mean to do this, but whether, uh, whether we want to have PE being supervised by people trained in PE. You wouldn't want me in a classroom. I would injure the students or kill them. So, uh, uh, I'm just hoping that, I just wanted to hear what more, what the plan is on that.
So, um, essentially, the, the test for, um, it's basically, a lot of it involves walking. So hopefully I don't, um, injure too many kids doing that. But, um, so for the test, um, I'm not going to do the full test. It's going to be partial. Because in the test, in order to, uh, get certified to become a wildland firefighter, you have to do a three-mile walk in under forty-five minutes with a forty-five-pound pack. Now, um, I don't think I'm going to do the pack. I might have a pack, for example. I'm like, go ahead, try and lift it, kids. And they're like, "Oh, my God!" But, um, I may have them try and do like a timed fifteen-minute walk, one mile. So something like that, so they can try and actually comprehend what they have to do in order to get to the point of success after they graduate. I just don't want them to, um, take this course and then go try and take this and then realize, "Oh, my God, I am," they did not- I just don't want them to um take this course and then go try and take this and then realize, oh my God, I am, they did not prepare me for this potential job.
Well, I'm glad you're thinking that through. It's good because if you got somebody out in the woods and they weren't ready, that'd be bad. Uh, so I, I guess I'm just hoping that there's some connection uh with what you're planning and somebody either in your own expertise, because I don't know what your expertise is, or somebody in the PE.
Absolutely. What we probably do is kind of like, because those aren't going to be the main parts of the course. Um, maybe have them show up for that particular day um and they can monitor or even in, heck, they can be the ones that administer um the PE portion. Um, so that's something we could work towards.
And if we wanted to, to add a PE credit to that, we'd have to have a, a PE licensed person um involved and be the teacher record for the PE.
Well, and, and given the fact that he, you know, even if you don't do the PE credit, as he just pointed out, there's, could be some rigorous work there if they're walking in the woods. Uh, uh, this is a lighter question. Uh, do you happen to have any plans to have mock fires that you're going to put out?
So um, that's actually a great question. I'm glad someone brought it up. So that one would be something we did as a field trip. And that would have either a professional private crew and or the um local PD involved. Because the local structural guys actually have people on their squads that do wild and firefighting as well. They, they train for everything now. Um, especially with the advent of so many fires burning all the time. Um, and so that one's just super easy to get. Um, the only problem and the only thing we'd have to make sure we do properly is making sure we have all the proper paperwork and approvals from uh parents or guardians regarding them going and being supervised during that activity.
There's a safety issue. And there's also scheduling issue because I'm, I'm apparently scheduled to do mock interviews and mock debates. Uh, I don't know if I have time to do the mock trial, uh mock fires unless you have another.
But they were talking about uh burning the principal's car, but that I discouraged that. I.
Yeah, that one's off the table.
I got my little joke in.
Great. I wanted to just really quickly kind of follow up on all those comments. I think these um courses really reflect uh dedication to preparing kids for what life will be like after high school for them. And I think the focus on the CTE and the career exploration um makes perfect sense. And the civic action and leadership, while Ron is maybe worried about this class, I am so excited about the idea that we would have public officials coming in and speaking with um students. And I think we've got a great group here to draw from and I would volunteer any day for that because I'm, I'm passionate about public service in our community. Um, and I think you, you would have a lot of community engagement with that one. And just on a personal note, the, the firefighting courses, um, I mean, that's impactful in our community as of, you know, what, three or four months ago. And um, my family was impacted. I know we've had students and staff and administrators that were also impacted. And um, you know, with climate change, this is just an incredibly important skill that we have in our um workers. And I was just randomly perusing federal jobs recently and in the Northwest, they were probably eighty-five to ninety percent in the firefighting field. Um, and that's at the federal level. So I can imagine the state level is gotta be just as high. So um, again, thank you for these incredibly um timely and important courses for our kids.
Uh, if I may, just add one more thing on top of that. I can't remember who mentioned it. I think it was Dave perhaps, uh talking about doing these courses fifteen years ago. Um, the one thing I wanted to mention about yours, our school district is, yeah, ten, fifteen years ago, when I was taking high school, my school district got rid of all these courses, you know, and, and you know, everyone was pushing, you know, gotta go to college, gotta do this. And it was incentivized and they removed home ec, they removed shop, they removed automotive, all of these different things. And I'm not saying kids have to do these, but I, I just can't stress enough how awesome it is that this school district um makes it important that all opportunities are provided. And so I just want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to even present these to you because it was something I didn't have. And I really want my students to be able to choose and have the choice between college or something else. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Randy, this is the first read. Are we supposed to wait till the next meeting to adopt these?
The board may approve some. Well, it's up to us. The board can approve some or all the classes or ask more questions and have them brought back on the night. What is everybody feeling about that? Are there any classes specifically that we would like to take out to learn more information on?
I'm comfortable with all of these.
I'm ready to vote.
I would say you would need to add to the proposed motion, the Intro to Public Safety course, because that was missed in the packet.
Dave, did you have something?
Yeah, I thought, thanks you guys. Great presentations. I think they're, the kids are gonna love it. So I would be willing to vote tonight.
Would you like to make a motion and see how it goes?
Oh man, I don't know if I can get to all the right words in there. Um, I'd make a motion at the Newburgh School Board, uh adopt the, the classes as read to us tonight. And I don't know if that's official enough for you guys.
There's a proposed motion at the bottom of the page in the packet and it needs to have Intro to Public Safety added to that.
Anyone willing to take on the motion?
I don't have that up on my screen. I can't get it.
I'm willing to move.
Directors approve the career exploration, criminal justice one and two, wildland firefighting one and two courses as offered at Newburgh High. Is the public safety one at Newburgh High? Catalyst, right. Uh, uh, and uh Intro to Public Safety course at Newburgh High School and Catalyst High School. Uh, sports literature composition at Newburgh High School and civic action and leadership at Mountain View Middle School. Does that work?
Good job. Is there a second?
Second.
Wait, Rebecca beat you to it. All right, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
We don't even have to say drive safe because everybody should hopefully be home, except for Greg. I'm sorry, Greg. Drive safe tonight. Okay, next up, um, we have a proposal for a name change to the Dundee Gym. And I believe Rick Crocker um was the person I was communicating with, but is there a different representative here tonight?
Tim Wright and Leslie Carsley are gonna present. I'm gonna need to find Leslie to try and promote her. I believe Tim is already on. Is that correct or not?
Yes, I see Tim. Welcome, Tim.
Oh, that's right. Leslie is not able to get on because of internet. So Tim's gonna handle that and then I'll promote Reed and Reed Langdon, the principal, in case there are any questions.
Perfect. Okay, well, welcome, Tim. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've prepared a, a statement to read tonight and then because Leslie has internet issues at her house on Bald Peak, she asked that I read her statement as well. So uh, first of all, my statement opens with uh discussing a little bit of the process that we've gone through to come up with this decision to bring this before the board. So, good evening. Uh, thanks for giving me the opportunity to share our, our application to rename the Dundee Elementary Gymnasium and honor Rick Harris. I'll be sharing on behalf of a committee that has submitted an application for this name change to the school board. This committee started when our principal Reed Langdon recognized that there were several staff members who were interested in finding a way to honor Rick after his passing in September. When this committee first convened, a committee member suggested that we consider naming the Dundee Elementary Gym after Rick. Immediately, this idea had support of the committee, which consisted of classified and licensed staff from Dundee, all of whom had worked with Mr. Harris. As we learned of the process to have a space renamed or named for the first time, we were informed that in addition to the application, we needed support from two district administrators. When we asked Reed Langdon, Dundee Elementary Principal, and Brian Wood, Ewing Young Principal, and former elementary PE team member with Mr. Harris, they enthusiastically agreed to be part of the application process and to help in any way they could. In a similar fashion, Marty Brown and Leslie Carsley, who you'll also hear words from tonight, were eager to join the community as patrons in support of the application. To complete the application, we were happy to receive the endorsements of the first two school board members we asked, directors Ron Mock and Rebecca Perez. As we began the application process, we reflected on the facts of Rick Harris's career with the Newburgh School District. Mr. Harris served the school district as a teacher for thirty-six years. The last twenty-two of these teaching elementary PE, which included serving at both Dundee Elementary and Ewing Young Elementary. Many of these years, he served in other capacities, including many seasons and years as a coach at the youth, middle, and high school levels, as a member of the Dundee Elementary Site Council, as a cooperating mentor teacher, and he was deservedly recognized with the Crystal Apple Award in two thousand and thirteen. Although his tenure, dedication, commitment, and service on their own merit are deserving of recognition, I kept pondering myself during this process, what truly about Rick, what truly made Rick worthy of this outstanding honor? Our district has been blessed with many long-serving and dedicated professionals. Rick was not alone in this. But tonight I hope to share what made him special to our committee and to the Dundee community. I feel like I have a unique perspective because in the fall of two thousand and sixteen, I had the pleasure of succeeding Mr. Harris as the PE teacher at Dundee Elementary, where I still am today. I knew Rick well and had worked with him as a fellow elementary PE teacher for the previous eight years. I knew Rick was adored by the Dundee community and had heard from more than one community member that I was replacing a legend. When I learned over my first few months at his, as his replacement, how deeply Mr. Harris had, had blessed the staff, students, and community he worked with. As I began my work at Dundee, I was consistently greeted by staff members who welcomed me and assured me they had heard great, many great things about me from Mr. Harris. The fact that he had spoken well of me was not lost on me. It was much appreciated. But what was equally impressive and notable to me was that he had spoken highly of the staff, students, and community. And even his principal, Reed Langdon, to me before and after I applied to transfer to his former position. This was typical Rick Harris. Not only was he a master of using his words to tell a story, often to humor others at his own expense, he was a master of using his words to encourage and build up others. He was extremely altruistic in this way, always promoting others instead of himself. As this sharing with others unfolded, I realized through the comments of others, just how much Rick Harris had influenced them and how special he was to Dundee Elementary. After greeting me with a welcome, typically involving that Rick had spoken well of me, staff often shared something they would miss about him. Not intimidating at all for someone who is replacing a, a noted legend. The school's principal Reed Langdon shared how Rick offered a wise-sounding board, honest feedback, and strong leadership. Staff recognized him as amazing teammate, consistent, inclusive, and encouraging. They recognized his humor, friendship, and the persistent joy they showed while working with any and every student. Students spoke fondly of the ways that he had taught them not only PE concepts and skills, but also spoke of his welcoming nature, encouragement, and kindness. I remember one student in particular who had a question for me the first time we met. She asked me, are you the new PE teacher? Which I informed her I was. And she immediately followed with another question and statement. Are you nice? Because Mr. Harris was the nicest person I know. Rick Harris was a special teacher as well as an amazing person. He was a man of extremely high character, the kind of person who seemed to always have the right words at the right time. He gracefully engaged in hard conversations, could diffuse tough situations, and brought opposing sides together for the benefit of the school. He was confident, yet displayed profound humility, a superb role model for the students and staff that he worked with. The kind of person that people wanted to be around and to be like. A word that came to mind as I thought about why I believe Rick is deserving of this honor is virtue. In discussing virtue, Aristotle talked to focusing on being a good person, and through this, the right action would follow, that reactions would follow effortlessly. To our committee and many others, Rick Harris modeled this endeavor. It may be cliched to use a sports reference when speaking of a PE teacher. However, in team sports, we often discuss the grades not only by their statistics and wins, but also through the way they affect their teammates. We recognize the true grades, that true grades improve the performance of their teammates. This was the kind of teacher and person that Rick Harris was. He brought out the best in others. He called out the good in others, encouraged them, and built them up. But most of all, he loved others, and this was his win. Our hope in naming the gym after Rick is that we will not only remember what he meant to so many, but to remember to emulate the traits that made him special, to continue to build one another up, to continue to encourage others, and to treat others with love and respect. Thank you for considering our application. Thank you for considering uh this way to honor Mr. Harris, to recognize both his service and the way he served, and to continue his legacy at Dundee Elementary. Like I said, Leslie could not be here tonight or could not be with us tonight. Unfortunately, the snow at her house is not allowing her internet to work fully. So she asked that I share statements on her behalf. So this was written by Leslie Carsley, um, former administrator in the Newburgh School District who worked with Mr. Harris. Good evening. On behalf of the Dundee Elementary Committee, who has worked diligently to honor our friend and colleague, Rick Harris, by naming the Dundee Gymnasium, the Rick Harris Gymnasium, I want to thank you for your time this evening. I am Leslie Carsley, a retired educator from the Newburgh School District after thirty-nine years. I consider it an honor and privilege to come before you this evening to talk briefly about this great man, Patrick Harris. In the Newburgh School District, where Rick spent all of his educational career, he was known as Rick, Mr. Harris, and Coach. When I think of Rick, three things come to mind: family, his career in education, and his commitment to his and faith in God. Rick was a family man. He loved every part of what family meant. He embraced being a husband, dad, a grandfather, and an uncle. Both of Rick's children, Mark and Whitney, attended Dundee Elementary, and his wife Jan was a well-loved substitute for, uh substitute teacher at Dundee. Now his grandchildren are attending this great school. Folks who have been a member of the Dundee Elementary family for many years can feel the presence of Rick and his great family as they walk the halls. There are lots of memories of the Harris's family here. Rick graduated from Lenfield College in nineteen seventy-nine with a Bachelor of Arts in Education. He received his master's degree in nineteen eighty-three from Portland State. It was at Newburgh High School where he started his teaching career in nineteen seventy-nine. Rick was hired by one of my favorite people and mentor, the late Ray Simonsen. He went on to work with the following building principals and administrators: Gary Buffam, Gary Fendall, Joe Buteen, Marcia Garrett, Larry Hampton, Florine Stenbach, Shannon Stuikel, Kevin Purcell, Kevin Milner, and myself. During Rick's thirty-five-year tenure in the Newburgh School District, Rick taught English, Health, and PE at Newburgh High School. He was a head baseball coach, assistant football coach, and boys' basketball coach for Newburgh High School as well. In nineteen ninety-two, he moved to Ewing Young Elementary and Dundee, where he taught kindergarten through fifth grade PE. Those last twenty-two years of teaching were the most likely favorite as he got to play every day. There was a time, and it seems just like yesterday, when the district had a young group of PE teachers just graduated from college. They were so excited to get in the trenches. Rick was on the interview teams. The result? He was a phenomenal mentor and role model to Krista Buckley, Nick Coburn, Brian Wood, now the principal at Ewing Young Elementary, and Tim Wright, who is the current PE teacher at Dundee Elementary. He loved these individuals if, as if they were his own children. One of the things I so appreciated about Rick is that even though he was the old guy on the team, he looked forward to learning from his new teaching team, an extension of his family. This was truly an example of the high expectations that Rick had for himself to be the best person educator he could possibly be. He was not content to be just average. A few months ago, when I was preparing to speak at Rick's memorial service, I took some time to call the Newburgh School District Office and ask if I could review my end-of-the-year evaluations regarding Rick Harris, as well as other administrators I mentioned previously. I want to share with you some of the great qualities these administrators wrote in Rick's evaluations that made him such a great leader and teacher. Rick was well-organized, task-oriented, sensitive, flexible, confident, dynamic, and a masterful teacher who loved kids and cared about their future. He was the kind of professional, a, of professional educator we would want our own children to have. He worked diligently to provide consistent routines for his students. He believed all students can learn. Rick loved working with all of his students, no matter where they were with their physical education skills. He was most accepting of students' individual differences. Mr. Harris, as his students love and they called him, interacted with them to enhance their self-esteem and to foster the belief that they could do it. He especially enjoyed his adaptive PE classes. He took the time to work with individual students and support them in mastering a skill. Under Rick's tutelage, students of all ages learned a lot of skills, whether in the classroom, on the athletic field, or the, in the gym. Even though he had a broad knowledge of the curriculum to be taught, he would spend countless hours seeking new ways to make teaching and learning more engaging for his students. With Rick, competition took a backseat to cooperation and enthusiasm for physical activity. He was known for connecting with his students through a sense of humor, genuine care, and respect. Rick's colleagues would describe him as a listener, a person with a positive upbeat attitude each and every day. He always had a smile on his face and a personal greeting for any and all he met as he entered the building. Rick Harris embraced challenges and was a collaborative, encouraging team player. His enthusiasm and sense of humor were infectious. Rick was the one who al- was always willing to engage in philosophical discussion about life, nature, and the world we live in. I treasured those discussions with him as we were like-minded in many areas of life. In two thousand and thirteen, Rick received the Newburgh School District Outstanding Elementary Teacher of the Year Award. I happened to be emcey in that event. The two thousand and twelve Outstanding Elementary Teacher came forward. And with great suspense, I opened the envelope to announce Rick was the winner. Everyone was clapping, giving Rick a standing ovation. But where was Rick? Being the avid Oregon State Beavers fan that Rick was, he had taken some time off to go with Jan and other folks from Newburgh to the College World Series held in Omaha, Nebraska, where Oregon State was playing. Shelley Thomas, our beloved secretary at the time, accepted the award for Rick. As soon as we all got back to the school, staff gathered around. The phone that was put on speaker, he answered. We in chorus said, busted. Yes, we did say that, but also to let him know how proud we were of him and how deserving he was of this award. Giving the lasting, given the lasting legacy that Rick Harris has had at Dundee Elementary. Giving the lasting, given the lasting legacy that Rick Harris has had at Dundee Elementary and the Newburgh School District at large, I encourage you to consider the request of this committee representing Dundee Elementary to name the current gymnasium and the future gymnasium, the Rick Harris Gymnasium, in honor of this great Newburgh educator who has left such a lasting impression on so many people of all ages and walks of life. That's all I have to share. Thank you for giving us your time. We appreciate having an opportunity to share this evening.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for joining us.
I wanted to apologize. I got an email that Leslie Carsley is online, but I don't see her name or have her phone number. So I apologize if you're here, Leslie, and we weren't able to promote you. I didn't know which one your account was.
And luckily, Tim did a great job delivering your statement. So, thank you. Okay, so from the board perspective, we've got a few different kind of courses of action we could take. It could be an approval just offhand tonight. It could be an at the formation of an ad hoc committee. It could be, we could ask the facility committee to look deeper into this. What are some thoughts on how to proceed?
Brandy, I got one. Rick and I kind of grew up as young adults together. Great guy. I think. Sorry.
Take your time.
We should do this.
I'm good to vote for it. I don't see a motion. So someone would have to advise me what we would need to say, but I'm I'm all for it.
Greg, could you clarify that? I'm I'm not misspeaking when I say we kind of have three potential options, because the policy FF and the AR kind of leave it open and say the board will determine naming the facilities, and if they choose to have a committee, here's how they should do it.
Yes, the policy does not outline exactly what can happen, but gives some options and puts it at the board's discretion, I believe. Joe may have other things to add. I don't know.
You are correct.
Sorry, Brian, what was that?
What would the motion need to say?
I mean, it could probably be as creative as me, something like the move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approved the proposal to name the current and future Dundee Elementary Gym, the whatever the proposal is, the Rick Harris Gym, whatever the name is that's proposed. Something like that should work fine.
Dave, do you want to do the honors there?
Yeah, I'll make that proposal. Thank you, Brian. I propose that the Newburgh School Board accept the the name change at the Dundee Elementary Gym to the Rick Harris Gymnasium at the old building or the new building.
Second.
Right, is there discussion?
I just want to say a little bit, because my boys had him as a PE teacher. I didn't know him as well, Dave did, but I think this needs to happen.
And Rebecca and Ron, were you part of the the process of this, or what was your role in that?
Somebody called me. I don't know who it was. Maybe was it you, Tim? Somebody called me and asked me if I was interested in doing this. It was an easy call. So I did nothing except say yeah on it, so I don't get any credit.
Me too. Jane, Jane, Mary Jane Buckmeyer emailed me and asked me, and I agreed full-heartedly for it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Good luck. Don't get a too expensive sign, because you know it's going to be changing facilities here just a little bit, so, you know. Thank you for coming. Okay, next we have upcoming board elections, and this is just a conversation piece to remind everybody that Zones one, four, and five, which are currently Ron, Inez, and Bob, are up for elections in the May election cycle. And the beginning, the filing window is February eighth through March, oh, no, I'm sorry, February sixth through March eighteen. That's the time to, if you're going to be filing, get your paperwork in at the county elections office. And also for anyone in attendance, the Oregon State School Boards Association, OSBA, has a really good toolkit online for any candidate who is interested in running. That's a great resource. Does anybody have anything to add to that or questions? Okay, that was easy. Also, again, for anyone in attendance, if you have questions or want clarification about a board role, feel free to reach out to any of the board of directors. I'm sure that any of us would be comfortable talking about our roles and kind of what it entails. Okay, well, with that, we've just got our upcoming agendas. We'll be into February. I can't believe that for our next meeting. We'll get an update from both our equity and start time ad hoc committees, an update to the start time proposal, potentially the teaching and learning report. Doesn't look like we'll need a second read on those course proposals, and we'll be discussing the two thousand twenty, twenty two academic calendar. All right, I think with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. The board members will be going into an executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation. And Greg, that's going to be on a separate link. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I sent that link earlier today to all board members.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming, and I will see the board in just a few minutes during this meeting.